All right, time is 5:30. I'm going to call the special meeting of the Board of Trustees of the Capella Independent School District into session. First thing we need to do is just establish a quorum. We have all board members present. We do have a quorum tonight. Trustees, before we get started, one thing I just wanted to let you all know, kind of little change to our format tonight of what we had on the agenda. I think over the last, over this past week, you all have asked, you know, a lot of questions into staff. We've had a lot of things that they need to start thinking about and preparing. But in addition, following our, you know, our board operating procedure and our board policy, I've also had a couple of requests come in, actually more than a couple, from trustees that we move any formal action tonight that was scheduled for tonight. So as a result, if there's no objections from you guys, we are going to have discussion tonight, but discussion only, and we'll move formal action to a future agenda as early as our October 27th agenda. So if there's no objection from you guys, that will be our format tonight, and we'll move into our open forum. We did have 44 speakers sign up tonight. You know, we will allow one minute per speaker, and I'm going to read one short statement, and then we will move right into our open forum. "The Board encourages comments about the Capella Independent School District from citizens of the district, its employees, or from other members of the public. Anyone who has signed up to speak in advance of the meeting in accordance with board policy and procedures may do so at this time. The Board asks that each participant's comments pertain to public education and be no longer than three minutes. Remember that pursuant to the Texas Open Meetings Act, during special meetings or workshops such as this, public comment is limited to agenda items only. The Board may not discuss or act upon any issues that are not posted on our agenda. In addition, the Board has adopted complaint policies that are designed to secure at the lowest administrative level a prompt and equitable resolution of complaints and concerns. Complaints brought by employees may be heard in accordance with policies DGBA legal and DGBA local, by students or their parents in accordance with policies FNG legal and FNG local, and by citizens in accordance with policies GF legal and GF local. Each of these processes provides that if a resolution cannot be achieved administratively, the person may appeal the administrative decision to the Board as a properly posted agenda item. Copies of our district policies and procedures on public participation in meetings and filing complaints are available online at the Capella Independent School District website, which is capellisd.com." As we do, Secretary Matthew will be our timekeeper tonight, so you'll hear his timer go off at the one-minute mark. He'll raise the paddle, and that'll be your cue to rapidly wrap up your remarks. Please, you know, when it's your turn, just state your name and address, and then your time will start after that point. I'll kind of call you guys up in groups of five. If you could just kind of, we got a full room. Just keep the center aisle clear for us. That will just help keep, keep things in the room in a safe manner. And then I will ask, and this will be kind of ongoing tonight, but please keep any disruptions, clapping, hooting, hollering, whatever you got, really to zero. We will, at the end, I'll give you guys an opportunity to clap and whatever you want to do and support each other that, that spoke tonight. I know you're probably all here for, for the same cause, but you know, just a nice reminder that not everybody will agree with what is said. Most will, some won't. That just helps us just kind of keep decorum here in the, in the office, in the boardroom, much like we expect in our classroom from our own kids. So with that, I will call up our first five, which is Dr. Paul Haig, Alicia Howard, Ted Ford, Zachary Metz, Anne Carrigos. Goss or goss? I'm sorry. I always get that wrong. Goss. See, I had a ghost when I was in high school, and that was why I always say that.
Paul Haig, 220 Beechwood. "Dear Board of Trustees, trust. We trust that you will vote in the best interest of both the community and CIC, and a no to consolidation of Town Center Elementary is what we need here. First, TCE is the safest elementary school in the district, and keeping it open ensures the least amount of disruption. Second, TCE has unique and irreplaceable programs. You can't just start it over. Unlike Pinkerton, this isn't an IB move to Wilson. You'll lose staff. Third, many parents from Irving in the southern area of our district choose TCE because of its uniqueness. Don't take that away. Fourth, there are real data concerns. The rubric has changed. The traffic study is incomplete, and at the very least, we need a pause to get it right. Fifth, public schools like TCE is the heart of our community. Protect it, and you'll protect what makes Capella strong. Six, mental health matters. Moving children again and again, year after year, is not the right path. And seventh, we lack good evidence. As such, I urge you all to vote no on consolidation and give us more time to explore the options. Thank
Hi, Alicia Howard, 10317 Donley Drive. I currently live down the road in Valley Ranch. I'm not currently Capella resident. My family has been actively shopping for a home in here in Capella, specifically within the Town Center Elementary Zone. My son already attends Transitional Kindergarten here in Capella, and one of the biggest reasons we were looking to move here was so he could attend Town Center Elementary. What drew us to Capella was its strong sense of community and stability, especially within its schools. Hearing this, this school might close has really changed the way we're thinking about our future here. The idea of my son, or any child, having to change elementary schools year after year feels incredibly disruptive during such formative years. If Town Center closes, we'll have to reconsider our plans entirely, whether that means moving to another city, or more likely turning to private school options. I hope the Board will take into account how deeply these decisions impact not only current Capella families, but also families who want to invest and be in part of this community. Thank you."
Hello again. I'm Ted Ford at 231 Sleepy Hollow Lane. To the Board, thank you all for your passion for shaping the future of Capella's children. It reflects your deep commitment to our community. Everyone here shares your passion, and we thank you for your decision to delay this vote tonight. Town Center students enjoy unique advantages from its prime location, with minutes-away access to the library, City Hall, YMCA, alongside unmatched safety next to the police station. It is the model school you're trying to create. Your rubric information is outdated and incomplete, and the correct, accurate data shows that Town Center is not the obvious choice to close. Using the corrected data aligns with CISD's Community Dialogue Report, which emphasized the needs for transparent, data-driven decisions. Please ground your decision in the most accurate, updated information and ensure equity for all students and families. Let's work together to uphold Capella's legacy of excellence."
Go ahead and call Courtney Rice, Ashlyn Bowman, and Amy Pallett.
Hello, my name is Zach Metz. I live at 217 Willow Springs Drive. We've all heard about how great Town Center Elementary is. I just wanted to talk about some of the potential effects down the line. So we've already seen what happens in Texas when schools close. There's a, there's a, some research out of the University of Houston with Professor Kim. So when kids change school, change schools in the middle like we're doing from a closure, they're 4.8% less likely to attend college, 4.7 less likely to complete college, 1.3 less likely to be employed compared to their peers, and also their average earnings drop by 3.4%. So I think, you know, closing these schools is kind of ignoring the data that we've all talked about and we've all seen. You can look to Philadelphia, where 40% of their public schools were closed. And in those, let's see, most of the, I'm sorry, I read that wrong. 40% of the schools that were closed went to a charter school. In Memphis, Tennessee, Shelby ISD, 13% drop in reading and math skills. Texas is 37th in the nation, and I just think that you guys should take some more time to think about this and decide, and I appreciate you hearing me out tonight. Thank you.
Good evening. Carrigos, 139 Clover Meadow Lane. "I hope you all came with a lot of questions tonight, because I know we all have many. I have three for you to consider before you vote. Number one, are you confident that the proposal to close TCE prioritizes our CISD values? New priorities, including regeneration, protecting the perimeter, and expandability, were added, and I don't see these among the community priorities listed in the Community Dialogue Report. Number two, how has consideration of which middle schools could close in the next three to five years factored into the decision-making process today? Traffic volumes and safety considerations at North and East suggest that the adjacent elementary school, for whichever school is considered, should be considered for consolidation. And then number three, for Cowboys United to be the most successful, we, the CISD community, need to be the walking, talking billboards. Have we leveraged the collective passion and enthusiasm of our CISD parent and teacher communities without disenfranchising stakeholders? Thank you."
Good evening. My name is Courtney Rice. I do not live in Capella, but I am a part of this community because I teach kindergarten at Town Center Elementary. This is my 13th year in education, and all 13 years have been at TCE. A typical kindergarten teacher who has been in the classroom for 13 years like me has taught between 250 and 300 students. But because of departmentalization, I have taught almost 700. These students and their families have become a part of my story and a huge part of who I am. However, that is not what sets TCE apart. Capella is a top-rated district, and all of our elementary schools are great schools. But TCE is truly a standout in our community. We have spoken to many things that set us apart, but I would like to focus on departmentalization. At its core, it is the definition of Cowboys United. Teachers are able to leverage content and expertise to improve student achievement. Teachers can focus their curriculum to meet specific needs of learners rather than being spread thin across content areas. TCE has been using this model for years, and we have grown this program with fidelity. This program is different from IB and DLI. It is not easily picked up and moved to different campuses. And by separating us across the district, you are doing a disservice not only to our staff, but to the learners we love. Please consider the effects of closing a campus that is already bringing such a strong program to our district. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Ashlyn Bowman, and I live at 156 Glenwood Drive, and I am a proud product of Capella ISD. When we moved back to Dallas, there was only one choice: coming home to CISD. When my husband and I bought our first house, we could have lived anywhere and brought our kids with me, but we chose Capella because we are fully invested in this community and in this district. I've spent the last 12 years teaching at Town Center, and I have given everything I have to this school. One of the things that makes Town Center truly special is departmentalization. I came in skeptical as a former self-contained teacher, but I fell in love with second-grade math, and I've spent the last decade becoming an expert in it. Because of that, I've had the honor of writing curriculum, serving as a team leader, mentoring new teachers and student teachers. I've welcomed educators from all over CISD and Namari districts into my classroom, because what we are doing at Town Center is worth sharing. I've known to be relentlessly positive and always assuming of best intentions from the district, but this proposal does not align with the data we've seen. Please don't make a permanent decision until you're absolutely certain this is the only right answer. I've built my life, my career, and my family around this district, and I am thankful for every year I've been able to invest in this district, and I want to keep believing in its future. Cowboy Fight never dies, and I hope I can continue to say that with confidence in the years to come. Thank you."
One second, Amy. I'm going to call Esteban and Veronica Castilla, as well as Corey and Tyler Wright. Go ahead.
Hello, my name is Amy Pallett. I live at 269 Chestnut Court. We moved here about five years ago, and that was really by sheer luck. We were moving from Chicago, and we lived in the most amazing walkable city with community. The parents talked after school, and I wanted that, and I assumed that would be in Dallas. We spent weeks looking in Dallas, and we had no luck. Our Realtor suggested Capella, which I kind of knew from growing up in Carrollton, but, you know, we're kind of rivals in some, some ways. But our Realtor had us drive down Hertz, and we immediately fell in love. You can kind of imagine, we're coming down the library, then we see the school, then we see the creek, then we even saw people fishing, and then you turn the corner and you see the core, and then you see the most amazing part, Andy Brown. So this is a neighborhood that is really special, and that's just one of the things that's special about Capella, and I really love being a member here. This is why we are all here. I want to thank you all for delaying
Hello, I'm Esteban Castilla. I live at 522 Lee Drive. Everyone here wants CISD to thrive, and Cowboys United seems encouraging. However, I fear its, its success may be in jeopardy. The Cowboys United website claims to use data-driven methods that are measured, tracked, and adjusted in real time. Yet, as we have demonstrated with the 922 proposal to close TCE, that data, that data was flawed, lacking, and outdated. Since that date, data has either been removed, changed, and not paused for reevaluation. I hope these same methods are not being used to pave the way for Cowboys United. Otherwise, community trust will be lost, and confidence in our path forward will be weakened. We're not asking you to say no to closing TCE. We're asking you to say no to bad data. Please request accurate current data so that you can make an informed decision, not a rushed one, and let's make Cowboys United a success. Thank you.
Good afternoon. Veronica Castilla, 522 Lee Drive. "Many of us have spoken about TCE's exemplary teachers and staff. From Coach Hayes creating Bike Club and attending his students' games on his time off, to Ms. Starr, our nutritionist, volunteering at the high school concessions just to catch a glimpse of her former students, to our first-grade teachers looking well beyond my son's elementary years and offering guidance about his future that has helped shaped who he is today. We recognize that TCE isn't the only school with amazing teachers and staff. Closing Town Center based on the current proposal puts all CIS, CISD teachers and staff at risk, as it will set a precedent that is, that inconclusive rush data is acceptable. CISD deserves transparency and a more comprehensive review of its options. Thank you for delaying this decision."
Good evening. Corey Wright, 322 Tanglewood Drive. "Thank you for delaying this decision. I've worked closely with many in this community over the last two weeks who are deeply committed to partnering with each of you to find the right solutions for our district's financial crisis. Together, we've compiled the 60-page document showing that key decision criteria were inaccurate. We know today that six of the 11 rubric metrics have already been changed in just two weeks, making the current recommendation unreliable. I'm glad to hear that this motion will not be voted on today, because today, if my five-year-old daughter that just started kindergarten asked me why is her school closing, I would have no idea what to tell her. We want you to know first and foremost that we support Cowboys United, and we want to closely partner with each of you going forward to make the right decision. For the sake of due process and trust from this community, we thank you."
I call Cheryl Engler, Frank Grisparro, J.J. Laffout, and Nicole, Cheryl Engler, Frank Grisparro, JJ Lefout, and looks like Arthur Mendez.
Tyler Wright, 322 Tanglewood Lane. I want to thank everyone in the entire room for their collaboration the last two weeks. We are all working together to make the best decision possible for CISD. Town Center has always been a special place. When my daughter started attending this year, I got to experience firsthand why Town Center is so special. After looking at more CISD data in the past two weeks than ever in my life, the data confirms that TCE is even more special than I had realized. TCE has the it factor that every business hopes to create, that secret sauce that cannot and will not be replicated by someone else. From the Kinder Teacher Trio to Coach Hayes to the location, TCE has what every charter school is hoping to create. TCE already has it. In accounting, goodwill is an intangible asset on a company's balance sheet. That value that's being special, that secret sauce that everybody wants, TCE's goodwill is far more than the 1.4 million budget savings, and the data proves it. Thank you.
Cheryl Engler, 144 Rustic Meadow Way. Thank you for taking the time to pause and complete your due diligence to use accurate and complete data to make an educated decision. I get it. We have a financial crisis. Solutions are needed. I ask you to consider one common sense option that is the least disruptive to our students. Close Austin Elementary with 223 bus riders or 41% of their enrollment. Reroute those bus riders to another school and have the remaining walk to Mockingbird, which is just .9 miles away. Keep the school that is highly ranked, safe, walkable, and able to utilize the civic and cultural resources. Keep that one open. Make an educated decision to ensure that your decision is the best decision for the children and for the community. Thank you.
Hello. My name is Frank Grisparro, 328 Crooked Tree Court. We've got to quit meeting like this. Well, first of all, thank you for the pause, and I also want to thank Nicole for educating me on Cowboys United. I said that right, right? Looks like a really good, comprehensive plan, strategic plan to increase our enrollment. And I'm going to say this in front of all these people. I will volunteer to interview those 700 families that have left. Not all 700. Interview some of the 700 families that have left CISD. You'll find out why they left and figure out what we need to do to get them back. So sign me up for that. In fact, you might want to sign me a quote. I'm a sales guy, and if I've got a target to shoot for, I'll do even better. The other thing I want to mention, and you've already answered part of this by the pause, but the safety and traffic was not included, in my understanding, in the final analysis. And I really don't see, because the data was bad, and we don't want bad data, right? But I don't think you can ignore safety and traffic. I can't imagine any elementary school campus analysis that does not include safety as one of the key criteria. So I'm very pleased to see that you are pausing and getting the data right. Thank you.
Thank you, Frank.
JJ Lefout, 136 Rustic Meadow Way. Over the past two weeks, we've seen something special: the awakening of a sleeping giant of intellectual capital. Citizens with expertise in engineering, finance, and marketing have stepped forward eager to help our district grow stronger. Now it's up to the Board of Trustees to harness that energy or risk potentially letting it go dormant. If the vote to close Town Center passes, it's only human nature to wonder, why share new ideas? Why give feedback? Why bring new data if it won't be heard? You have a tremendous opportunity to partner with an engaged community to help Cowboys United and other initiatives succeed and move the district forward. And thank you all for taking a pause, and thank each and every one of you for taking the time to meet with me and several other people throughout the community. And apologies to trustee Cavendish, who had to take my first phone call when I was full of vim and vigor.
Arthur Mendez, 228 Glenwood Drive. I'll be honest with you, I'm not very much into politics, but when I thought of coming here to share my family's experience at TCE, I thought, well, I can do it. So 10 years ago, my family moved here with two small daughters, aged five and three, who spoke no English, so you can imagine their fear. From day one, the staff didn't just teach my daughters, they embraced them. They created an environment of love and inclusion. It may seem like a small thing, but when a child feels safe, included, and loved, they are ready to learn. The staff created the safe and inclusive environment where my daughters could thrive, and the support was so effective that when they transitioned to middle school, they were able to graduate from the ESL program, achieving this proficiency that I am still working on. From seven years, that school was the center of our lives. We drove there, we walked there, we biked there, we went to the library next door. The staff at Town Center are more than educators. They are our neighbors and pillars of this community. I'm closing. It's a shining example of Capel's values in action, and to close this school would be a tear, a tear or hole in the fabric of this community. Thank you.
Mess your name up. Lindsey Hind, Jenny Yu, Chris Bryan, and Jeff Benavides.
Hi, I'm Gotham, 141 Dickens. We offer sincere gratitude to the trustees for delaying this critical vote. Your decision reflects the thoughtful, measured leadership that CISD deserves, moving us away from the hasty, destructive path. The school closure proposal, influenced by external consultants and built on an incomplete subjective data, was never a fitting solution for our district. We appreciate that you have recognized that CISD is not just a budget line item, but the home of the nation's brightest children. This delay is crucial. It gives us the time needed to thoroughly evaluate the responsible alternative proposals presented by a lot of smart minds here. Most importantly, it preserves the authority of our new superintendent joining us very soon. Thank you all for prioritizing our due diligence over urgency. We look forward to partnering with the board and finding solutions that is fiscally sound and educationally excellent. Now, is the time for action for seizing the opportunity this pause provides? As a great poet once said, "You only get one shot. Do not miss your chance to blow." This opportunity comes once in a lifetime. Lose yourself in the work of finding the right way forward. Thank you.
Good evening, guys. I'm Lindsey Hind. I live at 288 Beachwood Lane. A lot of questions have crossed my mind over the last two weeks, like, are we basing critical decisions on flawed data gathered and analyzed by an unqualified demographer? And one of the reasons supporting the closure is one person's theory that if Capel failed to keep schools along the edges of town, we would lose students to nearby districts. There are no studies comparing border-of-town schools to middle-of-town schools. Should we base our decision on false assumptions and no research? But I had a question for myself. After hearing the word "community" again and again and again, but not having it describe what I consider community, I decided to look it up. What is the definition of community? Well, my definition is the same as Webster. A community is a group of people living in the same place and have a particular thing in common, such as family values, education, and safety. Just like you take a step back and reconsider decisions at work or at home, please reconsider. Thank you.
Good evening. Jenny Yu, 204 Sleepy Hollow Lane. First, thank you for delaying the decision. For a complicated decision involving closing a school, a merit metric should be clearly defined, reviewed, and aligned with all relevant parties. Then the decision should be data-driven on the aligned metric. Subjective opinions are okay, because we are humans. However, subjective opinions can be addressed in a clearly defined and amenable way. Being subjective is not equal to being arbitrary. It's also okay to adjust the metric. However, the adjustment should also be aligned beforehand. A first grade would also know that rules needed to be agreed before a game. You cannot announce the results meanwhile saying, here are the new rules, and the results are based on new rules. Think about that. Is this really the way we want to teach our kids about integrity and fairness? The September 22 recommendation is not based on well-defined metrics or proper process. It's not a data-driven. Thank you for pause and for the long-term good standing of CISD, not just financially. Thank you.
Chris Boyd, Kristy Mitchell, Theodore Randall, and Megan Blanton. No, Chris Bryan. Yep, you're right. Chris Boyd. Boyd, sorry. I said that wrong. Boyd.
Good evening. Chris Bryan, 227 Sleepy Hollow Lane. I'd just like to thank the LT for looking at my expansion plan, construction plan for Town Center. Town Center is doable with a few small modifications to the land. Austin is doable with a traffic management plan, but I think we got there by working together, and that's something we want to take forward as well. Just the other thing I wanted to say is the last two weeks have been absolutely crazy. There is no doubt that you are fully committed to this role. The amount of time you spend with people and having feedback is wonderful. Thank you. I've looked through loads and loads of meetings in the past, and there are some key actions in those meetings that don't seem to come through, things like a pivot plan, things like a second opinion for the demographer. The demographer makes misses was a comment in the meetings. Let's really get down and look at the plan, look at a second opinion, but most importantly, let's work together. We're here for you. Thank you.
Jeff Benavides, 108 Cedar Crest Court. I'd like to speak to the future of Town Center Elementary and how it can complement the proposed Cowboys United plan. The plan emphasizes remaining and becoming the choice school district for families. Town Center Elementary is the very definition of a school families choose, and I believe it can play a key part in the success of this plan. The location features a close proximity to our key community resources and easy access to our park system, which our area is well-known for. But the desirability doesn't come from location alone. The high retention rate for teachers and staff contributes to both the A-rating from our education agency and the strong reputation the school has had for many years. Closing TCE may undermine the plan's goals of attracting new families, and it could drive existing families away from Capel ISD. The financial savings from closing this campus may be offset by the negative impact it has on the Cowboys United plan. Town Center Elementary is a valuable community asset. I apply the board's decision to postpone this evening's vote. Let's honor the spirit of Cowboys United by more closely examining this consolidation proposal in a way that is transparent and allows for community partnership in the decision-making process.
Chris Boyd, 346 Pecan Hollow, a father of two boys at Town Center. In my day job, I manage a commodity hedging and trading desk. I bring that up because, like you, I'm often asked to make difficult decisions under time constraints and with incomplete information. When my desk contemplates a trade strategy, there are always unknowns, but I like to distinguish what we don't know because it's fundamentally unknowable versus what we don't know because we haven't finished the work yet. The proposal to close Town Center was, I'm sure, the result of a great deal of work by many well-intentioned people. But we all know that good decisions can't be built on a foundation of good intentions. Good decisions are built on a foundation of solid data and analysis. I thank the board for pausing tonight's vote, and I urge you to demand the full data and analysis you need in order to make a fully informed decision. Thank you.
Hello again. Kristy Mitchell, 305 North Hertz Road. Thank you to the board and district leadership for listening to our concerns and proactive ideas over the last two weeks, and thank you for delaying the vote tonight. If the rationale for closing Town Center had made logical sense, our community would still be heartbroken, but we would not have spent 14 days pouring time and energy away from work, family and precious time away from our kids, to rectify the data and present alternatives that minimize the negative impact to our district. The collective community sent you a 59-page report that objectively shows that Town Center is expandable, does support regeneration, is better suited to welcome new students thanks to a newly renovated space, is better equipped for increased traffic flow and safety with the widest feeder road of any school, has far more walkable city resources, zero-cost field trips and programs, and has the least number of bus riders, is the only school modeling departmentalized instruction and is proven to benefit academic performance, and has the highest teacher retention rate at over 94%. A vote yes would be easy to be done with this, but a vote no is to stand up for what's right for our kids and consider all options based on sound data. I believe you will do the right thing, and I'm looking forward to collaborating with you all under Dr. Shiver's leadership on an involved solution for our district. Thank you.
All Kathleen Lambert, Megan Mitchell, and Monica Stridner.
Hello, a father of two former TCE children, Theodore Randall, 114 Tennant's In Place. As we read the key takeaways as written in the executive summary, I think we have to ask whether the recommendation to close TCE reflects the community's feedback and priorities. From that summary, it says, "Capel ISD continues to face important decisions about the future of its schools, programs, and resources." To ensure that these decisions reflect the voices and values of the community, the district hosted a series of community dialogue sessions across five campuses during August and September of 2025. These sessions were designed to give families, staff, and community members an opportunity to share their perspectives, ask questions, and provide feedback on the elementary planning process, budget realities, and long-term vision for CISD. Over the course of the dialogue, more than 600 community members participated in person. Hundreds of staff members engaged in dedicated staff sessions, and 2,356 survey responses were submitted online. Thank you.
Megan Blanton, 108 Trailwood Lane. The level of participation demonstrates both the challenges we face and the deep commitment of Capel ISD, families, and staff to preserving the excellence, equity, and community spirit that defines our schools. The following report summarizes the themes and trends that emerged from this engagement process. It is organized by the key questions posed during the dialogues and includes a synthesis of survey responses, table discussions, and written comments. This report is intended to reflect the collective voice of our community, not as a final set of decisions, but as an essential guide for the Board of Trustees and district leadership as they navigate the next steps in planning for the future of CISD.
Katie Lambert, 328 Park Valley Drive. Budget information? CISD shared an update on budget and enrollment information at each of the five staff and five community sessions. Stakeholders accept that CISD faces a serious structural gap. But they want proof of due diligence, school-by-school numbers, realistic long-term modeling, including vouchers, and a balanced plan that pairs smart savings with credible revenue growth. They also want decisions that protect walkable neighborhood schools, staff stability, and core programs with transparent timelines and concrete plans for any closed or repurposed facilities.
Megan Mitchell, 353 Park Valley Drive. What should CISD consider in the elementary planning process? Takeaway: Families and staff want CISD's elementary planning to extend beyond cost savings, carefully weighing community identity, safety, property values, and academic quality. They emphasize that closures risk damaging Capel's reputation and ability to attract new families. Stakeholders want a transparent, fact-based process that balances fiscal realities with long-term growth, stability, and community pride. What guiding principles would ensure planning reflects our community's needs and strengths? Takeaway: The community asks CISD to protect excellent programs and the educators who deliver them, keep schools tightly connected to neighborhoods, safety and civic life, be fiscally disciplined and transparent, and plan with a long view so Capel remains a destination district without sacrificing identity or quality. Thank you.
All Tiffany Tai, Dominique Navarez, Dr. Nawal Bendris, and Thomas Burrows.
Monica Stridner, 187 Chaucer Court, mom of three former TCE students. What do families and staff need from the district to feel informed and supported? Families and staff want clear, timely communication grounded in transparent data so they can trust the district's decisions and plan confidently for the future. They also seek authentic opportunities to engage stability during transitions and support that affirms community trust and belonging. I want to say thank you for pausing the vote tonight, and we ask that you honor the rubric and decision filter process that was carefully developed through broad community collaboration. These guidelines were designed to ensure fair, transparent, and data-driven decisions. The concerns we've raised are not isolated at Town Center Elementary. They echoed the voices of families across our district as clearly reflected in the Community Dialogue Report published in September 2025. Thank you.
Tiffany Tai, 121 Dickens Drive. Thank you for delaying the vote. We respectfully request that you take this time We respectfully request that you take this time to get additional options from Zonda. As we are currently under the understanding that Town Center Elementary, the closure of Town Center Elementary was the only option, the only plan that was previously delivered. We firmly believe that there are other viable options that can be developed. When you combine those options with a revisited thorough evaluation process, we know it will be clear that TCE is not your best option.
Dominic Navarez, two, nine, two Park Valley Drive. I had remarks prepared tonight, but I think I'm just going to wing it. So I want to thank you guys for pausing the vote. I think that goes a long way in building back trust with the community. I have a daughter that started kindergarten this year. I have a four-year-old and two-year-old that we're helping ascend to Town Center as well. You know, with what everyone went through this week or these past two weeks, I hope no one has to go through it. So let's find other options. We can't close schools. We can't put other families through this. So it's not just a Town Center thing. This is all the same.
Go ahead and call Chow Feng Yang, Julie Waters, Nadia Podkopova, and Byron Pascoe.
Nawal Bendris, two, zero, zero Rustic Meadow Way. Thank you, Board of Trustees, for postponing the vote today. The proposal for TCE closure has brought our community together. Highly skilled residents have volunteered countless hours to develop data-driven creative alternatives that align with CSD's vision while ensuring more stability for our children. Please use this free service. TCE is a symbol of academic excellence and a free billboard for CISD showcased by about 700 realtors in Capella. If someone outside of CISD district can name a CISD school, it's likely TCE. That reputation matters. Closing TCE would be a disservice to the spirit of Cowboys United. We're not here to resist change. We're here to ask for time, transparency, and data-driven decisions for both short and long-term planning. We urge you to vote no to allow for a careful evaluation of the community's proposals. If after due diligence, closure is still the best options, the best option, we'll be heartbroken but accepting of the outcome, and thank you.
Thomas, excuse me, Thomas Burrows, one, fifty-eight, one, eight. This is what the kids gave me in two thousand and five, two thousand and six, when I was the first home room dad ever to be at Wilson Elementary. It's easier to join the mafia than it is the PTO. Those women stick together. How about raising the taxes? How about letting some administration people go? I remember what I grew up with and we didn't have all this stuff and somehow we turned out okay. Mr. Hill, you and I have worked together on the census one time in 2010. I'm going to say something that's a little bit harsher. You vote to close a school, there's going to be different people sitting up here.
Chow Feng Yang, two, zero, two, zero, four Sleepy Hollow. This morning at breakfast, my second grade asked me, that YTC will be closed. I have nothing to say, so I said, what he thought? He said, maybe we spent too much money on nice chairs and tables. I wanted, but we don't need it. Can we send it back and keep our school? I said, you learn a lot of about economics from school. He smiled and walked to the school. This moment breaks my heart because the children asking questions, asking why, we cannot answer it. The real issue here is not which school to close. The real issue is why TCE was chosen. This process has been drifted away from true collective engagement. The greater teacher, authentic data are not of value. Now our children being recommended to pay the price for convenience and pressure. Thank you for delaying the vote and looking forward for the discussion. Thank you.
Go ahead and call Holly Chaka, Allison Fisher, Brent Billington, and Subu Venkatesh.
Julie Waters, two, fifty-two East Bethel. I'd like to thank the board for their time, and my main question tonight is, what is the overall plan with Cowboys United? Earlier in the summer, admin presented a multi-year plan to reduce the deficit. That included closing two elementary schools to save $2.2 million, closing and moving New Tech to save $1.6 million, and changes to the high school schedule that would save $1.5 million. So how is this changed with Cowboys United? Furthermore, even if we close a school this year, will we be in the same situation next September? Closing a third elementary school in three years? We are losing families because parents want stability for their kids. We need a plan. We can withstand schools closing if we know that there is an end in sight. Please give us a comprehensive budget that includes Cowboys United and then a backup plan if Cowboys United does not draw in enough students. Thank you.
Nadia Podkopova, three, two, one Brush Creek Trail. About one year ago, members of the board were tasked with a similar monumental gut-wrenching decision, close the Pinkerton. But it was at this very meeting, the board reaffirmed how difficult decisions have to be made. It has to be methodical. It has to include the community. The board was very clear and intentional about moving slowly, measure twice, cut once, cut surgically, because we don't want to change who we are as a district. We are at a similar position right now. Attacking the budget deficit is not a TCE issue, but a collective CISD initiative. It is a community effort. I believe we not only provided the board with creative alternatives to closing TCE, but also raised valid material concerns with existing process. Importantly, this vote is not a vote of one school against another. This vote is about community, trust in the process, and collective belief that the district can do better without closing TCE. Thank you.
Good evening, three, forty-one Park Valley Drive, father of two at Town Center Elementary. Fourteen years in the community. I've met many in the community that have served. Three mayors that I've gotten a chance to meet and learn a lot from. It was great to see Clay the other day as well at the campus. I really appreciate many. While I have never served, I really appreciate all of your time before this and over the last two weeks and even before this, when the group went around the five schools. In my letter that I sent, or my email that I sent, I pointed out a few, if you will, key facts and observations that I had of living in the community here for 14 years. And then I simply ask, if there's a committee or something I can raise my hand for, let me know. If it's an application, let me fill it out, because I know a lot of people in this room and at many other elementary schools here in town that I've talked to on the phone that would gladly raise their hand. Thank you.
Hi there, Holly Chaka, eight, thirty Greenway Drive. I'm here today not as a lakesider, but more importantly, as a Capelian. I know that a school needs to close, but I firmly believe the wrong school was proposed. My hope is that you will fulfill your duty as being the collective voice for the community. I can't help but think that TCE's choice has been overlooked. TCE's departmentalization across all grade levels is truly unique. Having been a self-contained second-grade teacher at Mockingbird and a departmentalized second-grade teacher at a top school in KDISD, I learned firsthand the benefits of departmentalization and how it provides the opportunity for students to have more individualized instruction. In fact, I could argue that it's more important to have departmentalization in K through two than three through five. In all of my roles as a K through twelve student here, a teacher at Mockingbird, a PTO president, and a connected parent, something that can't be denied is that TCE has always been one of the top three most desirable schools in the district and has continued that reputation. It would be detrimental to break up that solid group of unified teachers, parents, and students when their school already has a choice option. Thank you.
Brent Billington, two hundred Beachwood Lane. Today, I want to talk about trust. As trustees, you have all dedicated your lives to serving this community and doing what you believe is best for our children, something that this community trusts you to do to the best of your abilities. When TCE was chosen for closure and a new rubric was introduced, one that added two new factors without approval from the board, we lost trust. When TCE was scored last on the traffic and safety factor, did not rely, which did not rely on any subject matter experts and had such bad data that the factor was removed, we lost trust. When TCE was scored last on regeneration, with departments excluded and using incomplete property value data over only four months, we lost trust. When we were told that expandability was suddenly a critical factor despite shrinking enrollment and that no contractors or engineers were consulted in this determination, we lost trust. When information recently obtained by a FOIA request brought additional doubt to the transparency behind this decision, we lost trust. Trust is earned in drops and lost in buckets. If this community can't trust the district to make scientific and data-driven decisions for the future of our children, then school closure and budget deficit is the least of our problems.
Call Laura Wortman, Katie McKinney, Lindsey Pinch, and Christine Gilbert.
Good evening, Subu Venkatesh, nine, three, three Brentwood Drive. I think you guys are, in fact, I don't want to use the word you guys. I think Capella is always, the left hand doesn't talk to the right. Why do I say that? The left hand says, go to the city and get approval for Lakeside to be expanded by 20,000 square. The right hand says, close down one of the five schools that Doug has recommended. And then the left hand says, you know, spend $4 million on a school. In two months, the right hand says, close the school. Really? Really? Let's, let's, let's come together. Let's come together. In my first meeting here, or maybe in the second meeting after I came back from India, I told you guys to fire the demographer. Please fire the demographer. Okay, because on one hand, you guys are opening schools across the pond, in Valley Ranch, in Cypress Waters, and then Ninth Grade Center is brimful. And on the right side, you're saying, close the schools within the city of Capella. Would you do that if it's your own money? You're all businessmen. Let's think about it. Thank you, guys. Don't close any schools.
I'm on a friend's phone here, so bear with me. Allison Fisher, one, nine, three Hollotree Court. I've been a resident of Capella for over 20 years. I've purchased not one, but two homes during that time to send my children to Town Center Elementary. I'm speaking on behalf of many TCE families that are at North football games right now and wanted to be here. This timetable has not been kind for the folks with kids at multiple schools. A little bit about me, I've served as a chief financial officer of a financial services firm for the last 20 years. I'm grateful for all of you and everything you're doing on behalf of the district. I know you're in a tough position. I understand how important it is to have a balanced budget. That said, it's just as critical to follow policies, procedures, consider holistic data, and not rush major decisions on partial considerations. Frankly, this school was not up for closure last year. Please be thorough in your decision-making. I fear the board will greatly diminish trust and further risk the well-being and future of its schools if it isn't. There are considerable questions left unanswered. Folks left last week pretty upset.
My name is Katie McKinney. I live at three, three, one Still Forest Drive. I'm a mom to two tiny Texans, kindergarten teacher. After looking at each of your prospective careers and senior accolades you have each achieved, I would assume that you got there by making sound and well-thought-through decisions. Thank you for the pause. Consider taking that same amount of care and diligent thinking issue at hand. I hope that the board will continue to have a questioning mindset and revisit the numbers and timelines presented to you. Please do what you were placed here to do and deliberate the issues brought to you by our community. I am not asking you to favor our school over another. I am asking you to consider multiple options and not just the one option put forward to close a high-performing school in the center of our town. Please use your collective skill sets to make a decision that best serves the students, the teachers, and our community in CISD. Thank you.
Hi there, Lindsey Pinch, one, eighty-five Cedar Ridge Court. When Town Center Elementary was first named for a possible closure, it felt sudden and unexpected, and it raised many questions. But after weeks of careful review and open dialogue, the data now shows that closing Town Center would not be the right or responsible decision for our district. The community's independent analysis uncovered major flaws in the original rubric. More than half of its evaluation factors were changed without board approval, and there were calculation errors that made the results unreliable. Once corrected, the data clearly shifts the outcome. We also know that Town Center's student density remains strong, showing that young families continue to move into the area. And beyond the numbers, TCE's safety and accessibility are unique assets to the district, located next to the police and fire departments on the city's widest road for school traffic and surrounded by walkable community spaces. Tonight and in the future, I'm not asking you to favor one school over the other. I'm asking you to ensure that your decision is guided by accurate data, transparency, and integrity. Thank you for delaying this decision.
Hey there. Whoa, that's really good. I'm Laura Wortman. I live at five, oh, six E. Long line of Laura Lories and Lories that keep coming back. I'm the one with four kids who are in Town Center, CHS nine, CHS, and New Tech this year. And I always prepare something and then I crumble because it's really hard to talk, so I'm going to try just from the heart. We actually brought our top, our top, our three oldest kids in from the Highland School. It was, or currently is, a number two in Texas and a number three private school, sorry, number thirteen private school in the nation. And we brought our three older children here for not just CISD, but actually specifically for Town Center. My son, he originally was mapped to Town Center. We built here for that. Then we got remapped to Denton Creek and we put him into Capella Classical because we wanted him to have that charter school experience so that he could have some stability. If the zoning goes through, he'll now move from, we would have moved from Town Center to Denton Creek and now to Cottonwood Creek. That's all in the time that we've moved here into Capella ISD. See, I still crumble either way. It's so emotional. Thank you, guys, for delaying this decision.
Good evening. I'm Christie Gilbert. I live at three, four, seven Timber Ridge Lane. Thank you so much for pausing the vote to consider all of the facts in this matter. People move to Capella for three main reasons, I believe. It's our culture, the convenience, everything is right here, and our schools, especially Town Center Elementary. Closing Town Center will cause disruption to teachers, to students, to families, and property owners. It will increase traffic inevitably all around CHS and TCE, so our convenience will be lowered. Students will forego an excellent school with an excellent reputation. Many of our beloved teachers and families will be relocating. This will change our culture. If people stop moving here for the community, the convenience in our schools, which can change if the decision is to close TCE, it will affect our property values, which means lower revenue, which should be studied. Without our great schools like TCE, we would not be here. Thank you.
That will conclude our open forum tonight. So again, thank you all for speaking. I know that's, that's tough to do. As I said before, you know, minute I know is hard, but you can always email the district input at capellisd.com. That does go to the administration. Everyone is seeing that as well as our email addresses are on the website individually. With that, I will take us into our items for tonight, and I will turn it over to you, Mr. Williams.
Thank you. Thank you, trustee Cavanus. So tonight, we're going to spend some time talking about a process from, from where we started as a school district in 2017 to date, looking at a number of factors. We are going to review each component of Cowboys United, and then we will spend some time talking about campus consolidation. We do have some additional maps available for tonight in relation to, in relation to the boundaries. I will say that the, the maps that we do have in place are reflective of Town Center still closing. And so we do have those in place, but we also have some changes to our, the middle school boundaries as well. So anyway, we are going to, again, So anyway, we are going to, again, try to, try to provide as much information as possible. And so I'm going to turn it over to Angela Brown to start.
Good evening, Board. I'm Angela Ray on the district's chief communications officer. I want to go back, and you've seen this slide before, and really talk about, trustee Raval asked us to talk about alignment. So I want to go back all the way to the beginning of when we began talking about our budget issues. That started back in 2017. So I want us to think through all the things that happened between 2017 and where we are today. In 2017, we began our strategic design work, and that led us to the development of our core values, our mission and vision. In that timeframe, we also had a long-range facility planning committee. We also had our initial budget deficit discussions and began to plan that work. And we had the visioning work. If you remember that, we spent a lot of time looking at choices and visioning. All of that led us to the board developing the budget priorities. And we spent a lot of time working through what are those priorities? And you adopted those priorities in November of 2022 and reaffirmed those in January of '23 and February of 2024. That led us into our bond work. And our bond work, we was in 2023 using all of the information that we had gathered previously from strategic design forward, which led us into our strategic planning work, which happened in 2023 and 2024, where you approved Kapel ISD 2030. And then out of the strategic plan work came the 711 Strategic Plan Implementation Team, which convened in 2024. From that led to, you gave the charge to the administration to develop the Kapel ISD Efficiency Review Committee, and that work happened in the spring of 2025, which we call that the CERT Committee. From the CERT recommendations, which they made to you in May of 2025, was developed the multi-year balanced budget proposed plan. That came straight from the CERT recommendations. And that leads us to where we are today. This fall, we've had 10 community dialogue sessions and a survey, and then we brought forth the recommendation for Cowboys United and elementary campus planning configuration. If, I went back today and I looked at the number of input that we've had, whether in person, in a focus group, in an interview, or through a survey, we have talked to 11,000, 11,000 community members through this process about our budget.
So a couple of things before Ms. Brown goes to the next slide. And so the work began in 2017. I think that's an important thing to consider. And in 2019, there was a landmark piece of legislation that was passed, and that's House Bill 3. House Bill 3 was the major school finance reform for the state of Texas. It pumped around $6 billion into public education, and it raised the basic allotment significantly. The basic allotment is the funding mechanism, and that's the dollar per pupil that each school receives. I think one of the, and we've talked about it in showing the buckets and things like that, but it's important to note that the tax dollars that a school district receive is not, it's not the determining factor as to how much you have to operate your budget. Again, when tax revenue goes up, your, your state money goes down. And in our case, when your tax dollars go up, the more dollars you send to Austin in recapture or Robin Hood payments. And so that's an important distinction. In 2019, the basic allotment was, was modified, and it was greatly needed. But the basic allotment was set at $6,160. Today, six years later, it is $6,215. That's an increase of about $55 per pupil or about, it's actually less than 1%. Now, if you think about what's happened in the economy as a whole from 2019 until now, you know that inflation has, has just been oppressive along with things like continuing to provide meaningful raises for, for staff members, and that has to happen. But because of that, it has created structural deficit for school districts across the state. Should, should the basic allotment have kept up with inflation, the basic allotment would be somewhere around $7,400. We would be looking at about $15 million of additional revenue, and we would all be home right now. I don't know how else to say it, but that is the issue. And so I think schools across the state have had to make adjustments. And, and I commend CISD for, for having these conversations. But one of the things that I've said along the way is the, the adjustments that you make have to be, two words, they have to be significant, but they also have to be sustainable. And sustainable means year after year, you have to be able to realize those adjustments. One of the things that you can do is you can reduce your expenditures, and we've talked about that. But the other thing is that you, you can actively try to raise revenue in the way that you can significantly and substantially raise revenue is by additional student count. And that is very important as we, as we continue to talk about this and how we interweave a lot of Cowboys United into the discussion tonight, so.
This is another way to look at the strategic alignment. From our strategic plan, Kapel ISD 2030 with the 711 objective, which led into the CERT work, which led, from the recommendations of the CERT, led to the multi-year balanced budget proposed plan. Then this fall, the community dialogue sessions, the beginning of the Property Facilities Advisory Committee early this, this fall, and then leading to the recommendation, which really brought together all of those things into one recommendation. You've seen this slide before. This is the exact slide I showed you when we developed the Kapel ISD 2030 strategic plan. I wanted to bring it back today to really talk about that 711 was developed to develop an evaluation process, and that's exactly what it did. That team developed a rubric and a decision filter and a process. This is the exact purpose and charge that you gave to the CERT Committee. One of the key pieces of this is that all decisions were made through the filter of the district's core values, great teaching, collective engagement, authentic relationships, and redefining success. It also listed on there that the 711 rubric and decision filter will serve only as a tool for, for facility decisions. I think this is important that, another piece is that we will engage the community, and we have done that all along the way.
So this is a document that I actually put together based on, on the CERT recommendation. May the 12th, I met with you all about, about taking the role of interim superintendent. That night was the CERT presentation. And so I spent a lot of time looking at CERT when I came in and, and believed it to be one of the charges that you had, you wanted me to accomplish during the four months. I think our conversation was you really didn't need a substitute teacher. You didn't need someone that was just going to come in and kind of mark time until the next person came. There's, there was some work that had to be done, and a lot of it was the timing of the work, and I think that's very important. When I put this together, I wanted to put this together just for my benefit more than any, but we, we've, we've used this, this chart a couple of times. The first thing I do want to point out, there are three priorities that, that we have really identified as some, as some key pieces, some, some core ideas of the district. The first thing are staff raises. If you'll see, that's the, that's the second line down. If you go to the, to the column to the far right, 19 of the 22 respondents identified staff raises as high priority. Staff compensation is valued. We want to make sure that we keep outstanding staff here. I will tell you, we did some analysis when the budget was passed and evaluating all salaries at various, at various ranges. 10 years, 15, 20, 25 years, Kapel pays in the, in the top five across the metroplex and in many of those categories, top three. So that's important. Go down toward the bottom, and I want to identify two here. Programs for elementary students. So what that number reflects is nine people said programs for elementary students are basically untouchable. We want our, we want our kids to be involved in programs such as STEAM, such as art and music. And so that was very important. And then right below it, class sizes. Class sizes are also a basic tenet of Kapel ISD. I am proud to say that there is not one class-sized waiver currently in grades PK4, and I think that's an important distinction. And so those three, we, we discussed them as, as we've gone through the summer, but we also discussed them in the community dialogue meetings, that those were three things that we wanted to work hard to protect. A couple of other numbers to look at. New Tech. New Tech is the third item down. New Tech, if you notice, the other items in yellow are on the extremes. New Tech was right in the middle. What did this reflect? New Tech, this reflected that no one really had the appetite for closing New Tech down, but many people felt like that, that something needed to change with New Tech. So the work was done to relocate New Tech onto the high school campus, beginning '26, '27. We have four active teams that are working on that, and we are near completion with the plan to actually do that work in D Hall. And so I think that's important. So as you continue to go through this, one of the things that, again, we felt like we had to look at was close two elementary campuses for '26, '27. There was a clear recommendation, and if you see, 12 of the respondents said it's high priority. The next seven and a half people said it is important, but maybe not extreme importance, and then two and a half. So one person actually marked it a three and a half. That's how you get that, that half a person. And so it was clear that people understood that two elementaries needed to close according to CERT. And so really, a lot of the work that was done from the day I came in on June 2nd revolved around those two main initiatives. Again, making sure that we protect staff raises and class sizes and programs for elementary students. But we knew the big initiatives were what would happen with New Tech and then closing the two elementary campuses. As we go through this, we're going to tell you why two was not the answer. And so, or two was not the recommendation, okay? It's feasible, you still could go forward with it, but again, two was not the recommendation. Why, we believed one plus some, some other, some other recommendations.
I'm going to turn it over to the chief financial officer, Dinah Sercar.
So here is the multi-year budget plan. This plan was developed based upon CERT recommendations, the one that Mr. Williams just reviewed. We looked at all of that, and we looked at how we could impact the budget and bring our deficit down slowly so as, so that we were not having to make drastic decisions that would impact significant members of our staff. Remember that salary and benefits are over 80% of the budget. So really, to make an impact on the budget, to make a significant and sustainable impact on the budget, it is going to require reduction of positions. So these are the things that happened that are impacting this year's budget, the '25, '26 budget. We have reduced district support positions and administrative positions. Elementary staffing was brought down based upon decrease in enrollment, still maintaining class sizes. Pinkerton and the DLI program were consolidated. There have been some reductions in transportation, all impacting this year's budget. We also presented some other information to the board earlier that showed the dollar amounts of those. But this is what the work is that we're doing this year that needs to impact the '26, '27 budget. Coming out of CERT, they said, look at closing two elementary schools. So that's where we got that number. Also looking at the secondary relocation of New Tech and adjusting staffing in both elementary and secondary based upon what our true enrollment is. Looking at district staff support positions, staff support positions have been reduced, but we have got to find ways to reduce the overall budget. And so we're looking at additional positions that can be reduced. A lot of those are happening through attrition. A lot of positions that come up are not being replaced because we are taking the opportunity that we have at that point in time to reduce that position and eliminate that out of the budget. We're looking at ways to reduce our transportation shuttles, and we still need to start the work to look at reducing expense in our secondary schools. And so that has to do with secondary scheduling at this point in time. That's for next year's budget. The following year's budget, we still need to reduce expenses. We've got to reduce more support positions because we know that those are the ones that we're trying to stay as far away from the classroom as possible. We will continue to monitor our enrollment and make sure we are doing staffing in the appropriate staffing ratios at both elementary and secondary. And then we get into significant changes in secondary. Secondary staffing, whether we keep that PLC, the professional learning community period, or not, that is a significant change to the high school. Looking at pay-to-ride shuttles and home-to-school shuttles. Some districts, very few, but some districts charge for all transportation. That's what that number means. So as we're looking at all of these ways of reducing the budget, they are not a menu of items. These are all things that we need to do in order to reduce our budget year after year so that we can continue to support the programming that we have so that we can continue to support the staff that we have today so that we continue to give teachers a cost of living raise every year. We've got to continue to reduce the budget. So these are all things that need to be considered. And then '28, '29, if we get to this point and we haven't been able to reduce our budget enough to get balanced, we're going to be continuing to look, and now we're starting to look at things like elementary programming or secondary programming. And these are the things that are on the bottom of the list for a reason.
So, Board, I'm, I'm going to pause for just a minute. Do you have any questions for, for Ms. Sercar or, or Ms. Brown on anything you've, we've, we've covered to date yet? Or, or me, for that matter?
Yeah, I think I do, because I think there's like one piece missing here, or maybe you can explain. Like CERT landed on two schools for a reason, right? It wasn't just, just because it was a line item. There's like, and if I recall, there's an additional reason. Could you expand on that a little bit?
So they landed on that based upon our projected enrollment and based on the fact that when we look at our schools, let's think our schools in the South, those schools have 600 to 700, even 800 students in there. And there's an administrative team and a team of teachers that are singletons at those schools. So when you think of a school that has 600 to 800 students at it versus schools that are running with 300 to 400 students, it's a lot more cost efficient to have one singleton administrative, single teacher staff supporting all those students rather than supporting 300 to 400 students. So it was definitely about the efficiency of the model.
I just have one thing, Ms. Sercar. So the fund balance, correct me if I'm wrong, but the fund balance isn't just about the dollar amount that we have, but there's also a percentage over a certain number of years that if we spend it down at too fast of a rate, that also can activate TEA action. Is that, it's not just a dollar amount?
It is. There is a, there are some measurements. TEA says that the district should have at least two and a half months. That's a very minimum that a district should have in its fund balance. A district like ours that collects more tax revenue and gets less money from the state, we need to have about four months of our expenditures in our fund balance in order to have the cash flow to pay our salaries from September through December until we really start getting that tax revenue in. Our financial advisor would tell us that we need 40% of our expenditures in fund balance in order to maintain our AA+ credit rating. That impacts our budget or our bond sales. It impacts the rate at which those bonds are priced. Our district has an excellent credit rating. And so we are approaching losing that because we've got to be able to tell those credit rating agencies that we are making decisions to reduce our deficit. They saw us lose $6.5 to $7 million two years ago. They're going to see that we have lost $6.5 to $7 million this past year. Those two things have been supported by over a million dollars worth of one-time costs. So really, So really, we were losing $7 to $8 million a year. Because we had some one-time revenue that helped us boost that up, we were able to reduce that to about $6.5 to $7. But we've, we have taken $14 million out of our fund balance now. The percent is 25%. When we start reducing our fund balance by 25% in three years, TEA says, huh, are you guys paying attention to your budget? Are you making sure that you're making the right decisions? So those are safety nets in some ways, the safety net that, that we need to be managing to those numbers. That's what our first report helps us to, to do, is to manage those numbers.
Serkar, this, this slide, and I'll, then I'll refer back to a couple, too. I mean, every slide there is, you know, staffing, the mention or the word staffing, you know, that comes with, you know, some of our, shoring in our expenses. I believe, you know, and this blends into the next conversation we'll be having tonight, but, you know, with the recommendation on the table, it's about 1.48 million. The bulk of that is from staffing. Is that correct, the savings?
Yes.
Now, I just want to be clear, because I do believe there's still misinformation being spread. We believe, and I think Ms. Eichel, you stated this very eloquently last week in our meeting, when we consolidate an elementary program, or if we follow through with this recommendation, we have attrition, natural attrition, that we can absorb the, the reductions that we need to attain those savings. So by doing this, it doesn't mean we're handing out pink slips the next day. Let me rephrase that. If we should do this, it doesn't mean we're handing out pink slips the next day. Not too long ago, we approved the relocation of New Tech High School. It's my understanding, there will be some movement around, you know, they, they may, they being some employees or teachers may get moved into the high school or into another position. But to date, to date, we have not released any employees as a result of that decision that was made. Is that correct?
That's correct.
I just wanted to make that clear because I know that, that there is some misinformation being pushed, and I think it's just a very big distinction. Because I know it's scary when you see staffing and, and when your school is being talked about and you teach there, and you don't know what the future brings when you're talking about a school closure, that, you know, as a district, you know, our policy has been, our, for years, for five, six years, our priority has been on our teaching and retaining teachers. We're still focused on working every bit that we can to do that as we shore in and rein in our expenses.
Yes, and that is why this plan is a multi-year plan, so that we can use attrition as much as we can, much like we did with Pinkerton and the DLI program.
Thank you. Anybody else have questions up to this point?
Yeah, I do have a couple of questions. So, Ms. Williams, can you talk a little bit about the academic side of this, right? Because we talk about the expense side, we're hearing the numbers, seeing the numbers. How are, are we balancing the academic achievement and support of academic achievement as we talk about these numbers here? Because when I listen, and if I'm not familiar with this process, it looks like you have an erosion of staffing and the ability to maintain the high academic standards that the district is founded on. How, how does that process work in these sessions?
Yes, sir. It really goes back to those, it really goes back to those, those three, what I would consider to be non-negotiables. Again, as class sizes, as, as, as you see a declining enrollment, we are able to consolidate classes. And, and I believe that you have to continue to make sure that you keep the best teachers in place. You have to make sure that you keep class sizes so that they can provide good instruction. And then those, those, those programs that are, that are vital in supplementing a good education, math, science, reading, writing, it is important, but also students must be introduced to the arts. They have to, we, we live in a world right now that there are careers in STEM education. And so are we, are we exposing our kids to those, to those skills early as, so that they can continue to, as they go through their academic career, continue to enhance their skills so that when they do graduate, they can go to the college and university they want to, they are employable, should they go directly into the work world? And, and I think that what you have to do and, and what the challenge is going to be for this team and for the new administration is to really look at what those, those priorities are. You have to say, again, these are the absolutes, these are the things that we shall fund. And, you know, that, that will be the challenge going forward, so.
And the follow-up to that.
Based on the seat counts, because we know elementary, middle, and high school looks different in terms, are there any factors or parameters that are utilized as well to determine, you know, if we're getting outside of those parameters and things that we need to come up for discussion when it comes to academic performance and programs, as well as the extracurriculars?
So, you know, if, I know Ms. Eichel is, is responsible for, for making those types of, of decisions relating to what seat count looks like, staffing and things of that nature. You know, a lot of it is, is formula-driven, especially when you get into the secondary level, just because of the, the, the number of students that are assigned to a specific subject or something like that.
I just have one more clarifying question, because this came up during CIRC, and it's been rolling around in my brain ever since then, when Joby and I were the board liaisons. So for elementary, can you tell me what is required? What are we required to provide at elementary versus what we do provide? Because I think we've done what we do for so long in Capel that I, I, I was surprised by how low the bar and requirement was.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Don't give me a mic. Here we are.
Thank you.
No, good evening, School Board. One of the things that we are required, of course, are all the standards that we have within the state. With that, we have to also have PE as a part of what we're doing. That is difficult for a teacher to be able to say, I'm going to handle all of the PE minutes. There are districts that are out there that have taken away some of those fine arts opportunities, thinking about having a music teacher or an art teacher. We do not do that in CISD currently. We offer that as an additional special within there. We also added STEAM as an element a couple of years ago within that. With that program, we had gotten feedback from a lot of our families to really be promoting those opportunities for our students. And so that is another specials that we offer that is not a required part of what we do, but we do co-curricular activities as well as hands-on engagement activities that are a part of that STEAM that other districts don't offer.
Thank you, because it's been a while since my kids were in grade school, and I just thought this is how we did grade school, because this is how we did it in Capel. And so that was enlightening for me. So thank you.
The questions I'm getting quite a bit is when you look at that slide, when we look at our, when we look at the, with the secondary, flip to that with the transportation, yeah, right there. When you look at secondary staffing, PLC and pay-to-ride shuttles, home-to-school, you know, that's approaching $5 million. So something that I'm hearing is, why aren't we tackling this earlier? Why, why is this waiting when it has such a big bite?
So, let me fill this one. So philosophically, I believe that, that secondary staffing, scheduling, PLCs, block schedule, the whole work is a, there is some instructional considerations. When, when I came in, I believe that the next superintendent needed to address that based on their instructional philosophy. It, it, you know, there are some that, that wholeheartedly believe in PLC work. There are some, maybe not as important, we can find time for that. But this was one that I left for, for your new superintendent, because again, that person will be here long-term, and I think it's very, it's very important for them to really define the value in that. And because you, you know, it's, it's going to be a tough decision, the value of the PLC compared to the cost avoidance of that. And then you also have to look at teachers that have had either, you know, if you're on the middle school level, two periods off a day, a conference period and a PLC. If you're on the high school level, a full block a day, one block. On a day, you're doing PLC work, the next day it's a conference period. It will be a complete paradigm shift when you move to only having a conference period every other day or something like that, if you move away from block. Similar to elementary, elementary, I know sometimes they have time off during their PE class when their students are at PE. Sometimes they have that when they're at special, maybe not every day, but again, those are some teacher considerations that you have to look at. And part of the reason that working at CISD is, you know, it's attractive. So, and, but again, I think the, the, the thought is that that is something that the new superintendent really needs to, to begin to dive in, work with staff, and, and then be able to come to you and make a recommendation on that.
Great. And then what about transportation?
So are you talking pay-to-ride shuttles?
Right, that line item. Just curious why we're looking at it, the, the timing of that.
Yeah, I think that, I think that's something that, that can be looked at. I, you know, we didn't get there during the four months, but I do think for 26-27, it might be a consideration. You do have time to make that. You know, that's probably, you know, a decision that needs to be made in the spring so that you can begin to put systems in place. Whereas a decision like closing a campus because it's so far-reaching, the recommendation really should take place before Thanksgiving at the very latest.
Lee, I actually remember asking a question about this during the May meeting, the, the pay-to-ride shuttles. And that meeting was in May, and apparently there's like some systems that have to be put in place to do that additionally, that didn't seem like that was feasible to accomplish over the summer. And that was, some of those conversations, I think, were starting to happen before Mr. Williams was even here. But that was, part of the answer was the systems to get put in place by August. It wasn't feasible.
I think some of the other things that came up in the CIRC committee about some of the timing of these choices was that, remember, CIRC is the Efficiency Review Committee. They were charged with looking at where the district is not being efficient. And one of the places that was most highly identified was in the elementary schools because, exactly as I said before, because we have schools that are operating with 300 to 400 students in them. So charging every parent for transportation or losing programming for every student in the district was lower on their priority list than looking at trying to make the elementary program as efficient as possible by reducing the number of schools.
But just to be clear, we're, we're going to have to do all this. It's just a matter of when.
That is, that is the, the way that it was developed. We don't know what might happen with funding. We don't expect that we're going to get more funding. And it depends at what level, level we are able to implement these things. Right now, the recommendation is just to close one school. You'll remember, we had two schools here, so that's only a part of that number that will be coming out. So we do have to reevaluate these numbers with every budget cycle to make sure that we are meeting the targets that we need to meet in order to slowly but surely reduce this and get to a balanced budget without running out of fund balance in the meantime.
Would it be fair to say, or you can answer as a formal question, but just confirm my thinking here, that the reason that the, it's a multi-year budget plan, not only for the drastic amount of changes, but also we are one of the two or three top-performing school districts in the state, and taking smaller chunks out of different areas would ensure that we would continue operating at that level without fundamentally changing kind of who we are overall? Is that a fair assessment?
I think that's very fair.
I'll come back to the point that you had left off, us not having a recommendation to consolidate two elementary schools. If there's thoughts amending this plan in some way to make up the lack of $1 million in funding or address that in some other way.
Okay, let me make sure I get your question. So because we, we are recommending to close one and not close two, yeah, and that's Cowboys United. That is, that is creative ways to be able to work toward increasing your enrollment. You increase your enrollment, you, you bring students into the district. And, and again, that is, that, that's the, that's the methodology. I will tell you that when we, when we worked with the demographer, the demographer indicated that closing two prior to probably 27-28 was going to be problematic just because of some crowding that we would experience even in the north side of the district. But more than anything, the, the desire was to, was to, we worked on a plan to not close any. There was, there was a time in July that we said, let's try to keep 10 and see how we can get that done, but we could not get past the, the low utilization number and the fact that it's, it's a bold move to try to generate additional revenue through, through increasing enrollment. That is a bold initiative. Doing that for, to the tune of 2.2 million is, is that much more bold and just really was not in the best interest of the district at the time, in our opinion.
So, Mr. Williams, and this is probably leading you to, you know, where we're going with this. You know, we're about, with, with what's recommended from a school closure at 1.48, we're, we're about 720,000 difference in what, what was projected or proposed under closing two. Am I right in thinking, so our goal would be at least 120 students through Cowboys United that we retain, or not retain, but bring back into, to the district to make up that difference, or what we're looking at there?
That, that's correct. So you, you target that number of, of how many you can bring back in through, and, and again, we're going to detail, we're going to detail what that looks like. But when you, when you opt to not decrease your expenses as much as what you anticipated, you've got to do something on the other side. A lot of it was the philosophy. It was the feeling that if we close two, we're sending a message to all of North Texas that we're in contraction mode, and we believe we did not to be, need to be in contraction mode, we need to be in expansion mode. And so that was that, that was that balance that we struck. Staff really struggled with, with one. We, you know, again, there was a, there was a lot of discussion about, do we keep all 10 in place and we, do we get uber-aggressive? But there's only so much you can harvest, so to speak, and I, I think that's where we are. If we are incredibly, if we are incredibly successful in the efforts that we're about to discuss, and the revenues, you know, start pouring in again. But I, I think that we're to the point also is, we know that the legislature is going to meet in '27, but we cannot wait, we can't count on the state to bail us out. We know that. I will say that I am looking at a bunch of very talented people that can advocate for a cause. I know how to get to Austin, and you're more than welcome to join me in those efforts. We must have engaged citizens in Austin that are telling the legislature, you are starving schools. Do you know if we had just a percentage across the state of Texas that descended on the Capitol and said, it's time to put money back in schools, we would get their attention and we wouldn't be having to talk about what campus to close, we would be talking about what programs we could add to enrich kids' education. And so I will be going in January of '27, and, and I want to see faces there. And, and it's not just in, in Capel, it's across the state. And public education is worth fighting for just as much as TC is worth fighting for. And so that's, that's, that's my charge before we go on to the next.
Before you do that, Ms. Serkar, you, you had pointed out earlier, the dollar amount increase to the basic allotment was about less than 1%. Could you tell me how much inflation has increased? Could you tell me how much inflation has increased our costs between, between 2019 and now?
Inflation has gone up 20%, over 20% since then. And we have a number of areas in which we've, we've exceeded that in cost inflation. Things like property value, uh, property insurance. We have some utilities that have increased that much. We have, really, the, the biggest increase to our budget this year was the cost of living increase for teachers that the state increased. And so, while they're paying for that this year, we will have to absorb some of the additional costs of that, too.
Thank you. And then, I was gonna ask, cost inflation, oh man, I hate it when that happens. You just said my mind.
I'll go, come back to me. Way too young for that, by the way.
So, Ms. Sarkar, based on Trustee Matthews' comments, can you talk about the average cost per student? We, we always talk about the average, you know, the revenue per student. But what is the average cost per student? Because you go back to 2019, and you talk about a 20% increase, what does that look like, you know, for the average cost per student? I know that that's a generality, but just to give a frame of reference.
Well, I can tell you it's going up. I cannot bring those numbers off out of my head right now for you. That's something I would like to calculate, because I do not want to misrepresent any numbers by reciting something here that I can't tell you off the top of my head.
The second question is, we talk about, you know, we were in Houston, and every time we hear the Mike Murafar TA Commission, he talks about the TIA. Can you talk about that in relationship to the, the revenue that would be provided for the number of people that could earn those designations in the, I guess, the spring or summer of this year?
The teacher incentive allotment is something that each teacher would qualify for individually. Some would qualify, some will not, but it's a pass-through. The funds come into the district and they get paid out to the teacher. So, it increases the teacher's salary, but does not provide additional revenue for the district.
What percentage of, of the, the teaching population, on average, has received that across the state in general? Do you have any idea?
I do not, but I, I want to say 30 to, 30 to 35%. Ms. Lickle, do you think that's about right?
That's an accurate number for the school districts that choose to participate. So, there's not any requirement for a district to participate. And as our staff can attest to, it's a several-year process even to get the program up and running. And so, last year was our first year to collect our data through our teachers' T-test evaluations and the SLO goals and performance of their students, which are two components that have to be included in TIA. And so, we're in the process this fall of uploading that data to have our program approved. But of the school districts that choose to participate, about 30% of the teachers get an initial designation. But then each year, you're in the program, teachers are eligible to increase their designation and/or eligible to receive a designation, so it's not a one-and-done, so to speak.
Oh, how we're funded is based on, could you explain that one more time?
We're funded based upon the average daily attendance of our students. So, how often a student attends school, how many students we have and how often they attend. And then we get some additional funding based on special characteristics of those students, those students needing more additional services. And so, we get a little bit of additional funding for those students. That's why it's hard to give you a cost per student, because some students cost more, some students derive more revenue for the district.
Enrollment, but the average daily attendance of that enrollment with some other factors mixed in.
Absolutely.
Okay, so, Ms. Sarkar, thank you so much. So, one of the other things that we have been, we've been working toward is, we've been, we put a group together that, that wanted, we wanted to look at, at properties and facilities of the district. We've, we have now two buildings that are no longer being occupied. And so, we asked Sid Grant to lead that, so I'll have Sid present.
Great. Thank, thank you. Good evening. Sid Grant, Chief Operations Officer. Yes, starting with our first meeting being held on August 4th, we put together a committee, actually a fairly small committee, made up of three, three local realtors, a city council member, and a, and a couple of other community members, actually look at Pinkerton and the New Tech Building, and then the Footprint Elementary in general. Since no decision had been recommended at that time, to look at the properties, look at locations, and start coming up with a list of possible long-term uses for these properties, whether, whether it be repurposing for the district, selling properties, renting properties, et cetera. So, once what, what we decided as a, as a group, and, and were made up of, of two of our board members as well, on that, on that committee. So, but what we decided, what the committee decided to do was once a decision was made regarding a Footprint Elementary School, we would get back together and continue that, the, the brainstorming process of possible options, and then start prioritizing what those, what the recommendations would be. Ultimately, the committee would make a recommendation to you, the Board of Trustees, for, for each of the properties, may, perhaps some short-term, some short-term recommendations, as well as long-term recommendations for the, for those properties.
I have a question. So, we have additional properties beyond what you've mentioned, right? Like, half of the parcel that Canyon Ranch is on. I believe we still have a parcel, I think it's not floating anymore, but somewhere in Cypress Waters that was initially a floating parcel. Are those properties also being discussed during, in these committee discussions?
There, there is no undeveloped land that is being discussed as part of this process. We, you know, the, the thought process is to give a, a board, a future board, the option, whether it be 10 years down the line, 20 years down the line, that should there be a need for, for another educational facility, whatever that might be, to, to allow that, to allow that option to still be on the table by, by holding on to land that we have. Yeah, you're, you're correct. There's, there's land next to the DART station, and there's, there's land north of Capella Middle School West, approximately 30, 40 acres. And then there is also the land next to Canyon Ranch.
Other questions for Mr. Grant?
Just wanted to follow on to piggyback Trustee Bentley. We knew that when the whole Cypress Waters took place, and Mr. Grant, I know you were an integral part of that, are there any triggers in there requiring us to do anything with those lands? Because of the construction that's taking place, I know that has been the template going forward, but I didn't know if any of those things were coming to play, driving us to having to make the decision to utilize that land or sell that land?
Not, not in, not in the short term. There is, there is a covenant in the, in the agreement when we purchased the land in Cypress Waters, that once so many either multifamily or single-family units have been completed, then the dis, the school district has, I believe it's, it's four years to start construction on an educational facility for any undeveloped land within Cypress Waters. And if that, if that development did not take place, the land developer would have the option of repurchasing that land from the school district for, for what we paid for it in 2008.
And Mr. Grant, one other question. I know that a lot of the architectural firms and/or maybe construction firms are getting into the reuse of surplus facilities. Do you have any, have you heard anything along that line about any of those, you know, kind of weighing in and saying, "Hey, if you have surplus facilities, we may be able to help you in, in utilization of those facilities," from that standpoint? Or, Mr. Williams, I would just wanna pass it and see if you've heard anything like that.
No, sir. No, we haven't. Now, again, the, I, I think one of the things that has been significant with our property and facilities team is people know that, that that team has been formed. And I do think some opportunities will arise as they continue to work through the process. Okay. Thank you, thank you, Mr. Grant.
Thank you.
This first section really was talking about kind of how the recommendation is in alignment with our strategic plan and all the feedback that we received dating all the way back from 2017. That was the first section of our presentation tonight.
So, now we're gonna get into Cowboys United. The, the Cowboys United program really was, really was born in the middle of July, as we started looking at, at the desire to not close campuses. And, and instead of just going into complete cut mode, in complete slash mode, what could we do to strategically reposition ourselves as a school district to be a, to be a, I think, to leverage our competitive, competitive advantage that we have always had? I had, I had separate conversations with the seven of you. The three ladies came to me within two weeks and basically all had the same conversation. And that was, we're Capella. What, what should we, what can we look like going forward? And a lot of it revolved around the fact that we have uniqueness, and how can we leverage that uniqueness to, to be able to make sure that we were competitive in an ever-increasing competitive environment? We have charter schools. We have four active charter schools near us. Next year, 26, 27, we will have private schools. And so, I think that as we started looking at that, it was very important for us to make sure that we continued to have conversation about how can we make sure that when people have the choice, we are the choice? And so, that's, that was Cowboys United. And so, we began to talk about, if we don't close two, how can we offset that number? We have 700 students that live in, within our boundary, that attend a charter school. That needs to change. We must be very aggressive in how we go about it. Trustee Cavendish, I think he did some quick math, and he said 120 students. I think the goal should be 350 students. We want half of them. The goal should be 700. That's aspirational, right? But, but we should be, we should be aggressive in how we can go and we can get 350 students back in this district. I'm not talking about opening enrollment here. I'm talking about students that reside here, their parents pay taxes here, but they are opting to go somewhere else. And, and I think that has to change. And so, Cowboys United is, is that. And, and so, we were, we are going to be very intentional in, in setting up. The word that we're using is framework. In a minute, you are going to hear from the soon-to-be superintendent within less than five hours now. And so, but we are, you're gonna hear from her. But this is a framework for, for programs that we want to, that we envision, that we envision being insulated during the next 18 months that will continue to make sure that Capella keeps that competitive advantage that we've always had.
It's important that as we begin this marketing initiative, that we, we know there are 700 students that have attended us and, and have chosen another option. What we don't know is how many more have never attended us and are attending another option. So, really, our data-driven retention and recruitment program is about that. It's about identifying the families who, for, for one reason or another, do not send their children to Capella ISD. Whether they are sending them to charter school, to a private school, homeschool, a virtual K-12 program, whatever that option may be. And then also, and talking about where are they going, why are they going there? So, that, that push factor, what's pushing them to that, to that other facility, to that other program? And then what could it be that would entice them back, that pull factor? And then, same thing for our own families. So, really, we have to dig in deep to why people choose Capella ISD. We've heard great things tonight about that. But what, what, why are families choosing Capella ISD, and why are they staying here? And what can we do to make sure that we continue to, to keep families here? So, this really kind of has that dual, that dual sense to it. But it's digging in deep into the, into the data. We have not done it this way before, and it's important that we do that. We have the data if they've ever attended us and left us. We can track those, those students. But we've never done kind of a true outreach. And it will take all of us working hard to, to get this data and this information. And I'm gonna take up Frank. Frank and I are gonna be, Frank and I are gonna be partners in this work. Any questions about the data-driven piece?
We anticipate that to happen.
Quickly.
Quickly.
I have a meeting tomorrow.
If people want to sign up for this, and I'll, I'll kind of sidetrack and say, any, any committee, I know we heard, heard that in the open forum.
Yes.
They can do that, reach out to you, the website was.
They can always reach out to me, abrown@capellisc.com, or input@capellisc.com. There is a form on the website that's called Committee. And you can, in the search bar, to the little AI bot, you can put in Committee, and it'll pop it up for you. Any of those means will all get to me. And I can, we, it's gonna take all of us for Capella United. There's big plans for it, because it's gonna involve focus groups. It's gonna involve a giant summit, where we're, where our goal is to have 1,000 or more people to come together and let's talk about Capella ISD. It's going to involve one-on-one interviews. It's going to involve going out to where our families are. So, whether that's the soccer fields or the playgrounds, it's gonna talk about going to where they are and having conversations, and really digging in deep. It's, it's gonna be a lot of work, but it's important work.
The next aspect of it is, CISD is the choice. And Dr. Brooks is going to talk about choice opportunities.
Good evening, everyone. I have a few of my notes right here, but y'all know sometimes I just go with the flow of what I say, so just roll with me. As you know, we have a wide range of learning opportunities for our students in CISD. As mentioned earlier, when we think about CISD, and when we're thinking about the fine arts opportunities, when we're thinking about athletics, when we're thinking about our programs at the elementary level, I am very proud also, too, to always state that we focus not just on the academics, we focus on the whole child in CISD. And so, when we're having these discussions about staffing and about programs and all those things involved, I just think that we need to keep that at the core of who we are, that we do that. And when we're thinking about this as well, I talked about STEAM just a few minutes ago. We have our IB program, we have our DLI program, which you know that is something that we choose to do here through that bilingual program that we offer in CISD. Some of the things that we have done in the past as well, specifically from the elementary perspective, project-based learning, challenge-based learning. You heard about departmentalization earlier at campuses, specifically Town Center. We are looking at also to really being able to push that hands-on inquiry-based model. We have gotten data and feedback in the last couple of years. You know, that word "classical" keeps coming up within a lot of our charter schools. So, when we think about that, and we're thinking about whether you look at that as a low-tech kind of piece, or if you look at that as, hey, how are we having that inquiry-based instruction that definitely sits and balances on literature and the things that we're doing, as well as that hands-on approach? How are we really looking at all of those models? One of the things that I had mentioned the last time that we talked about choice was looking at tuition-based pre-K. Now, when you're thinking about that, it's not necessarily as much of, we're gonna get a whole lot of funding that's gonna be coming in from that, but more so, we're getting our kids earlier. Right now, it's if they meet pre-K eligibility. As you know, within our program, they are able to come. Also, too, we added our teachers this year as a part of the state within that. But if we do recruit early and we can get our kids here, our kids stay. That is something that we've seen within CISD. At our secondary level, because we also, too, want to make sure that we're talking about that, the courses there, of course, we have our AP, we have our IB, we have New Tech with our PBL. We have Victory Place, which has the acceleration as well as credit recovery opportunities. And we're adding our CLA by literacy once again with that cultural focus. When I'm thinking about our CTE, Career Technical Education, sorry, acronyms in education for all of you out there. But when I'm thinking about that, right now, the state is having some new expectations with career college military readiness. And so, what they're looking at is they're looking at program completers, not just students that took specific CTE courses, but actually going through each of the different levels that you would have to become a completer, as well as have those certain. that you would have to become a completer as well as have those certifications. They're also going to be looking at attaching funding to that as well as the accountability. So when you're looking at that and you're looking specifically at our CTE programs, I was visiting with a district not too far from us the other day, and we were talking about their CTE program, and I started asking questions because we've moved one of our principals' courses down computer science this last year. We are having a great rate of students that are interested in that. So when we're thinking about that, there are some ways in adjusting different courses to our middle school to help with the completer piece, but also too, to look and be able to see how much funding can come in to help with staffing. Sometimes we're CTE, Ms. Serkar mentioned earlier about how some of those dollars, when you're looking at per student and you're looking at specifically whether it is a student meeting an eligibility or specific courses such as Career Technical Education that could also bring in some additional dollars to help support the district. Another thing that we've talked a lot about too is looking at that data and looking at the workforce data. So when we're looking in the DFW area, how are we really using that data to make sure when we're having those programs of study that we are choosing the best for our kids? Another opportunity, and this is something that has started from the state, when you're thinking about the recruitment of possibly bringing some of our families that are maybe going charter, I'm really thinking maybe going homeschool here, but they're the virtual learning opportunities. Now, what a lot of districts are doing, because there are some options with this now, you can actually offer a hybrid model. Actually, Mr. Hilton and I were having a conversation just the other day. We attended a different event to be able to hear more about that. And we were talking about if you had that at an elementary level and you said we could recruit families in for a hybrid model, so part of that would be pretty much an online learning platform that they're already using, a lot of homeschool families are. But then they're coming in on certain days of the week to be able to have hands-on collaborative experiences. What a unique opportunity to also rebrand and possibly full in some families who we may have lost as a district.
And and just point of reference, we would draw ADA on those students.
Yes.
Those, those students would count toward our enrollment, which, and that, that's an important distinction.
Yes. And another piece on that too is looking at our, at the secondary opportunities for virtual within that. Right now, with our acceleration or our credit recovery program at turning point, we don't necessarily have a work release as a part of that or an internship opportunity. So are there some things that we could do there to also be able to support some of the different goals that we have or initiatives? One of the big things that we do want to figure out and make sure that we're doing well, because excellence is is a thing, not just a Capella thing, that's an Angie thing. But we have to make sure that we're aligned. Whatever we're going to be doing with our programs and our offerings within that, we want to make sure that if we're doing things at elementary, that we have that middle school alignment that then feeds to our high school program, similar to, once again, the CCMR when you're looking at programs of study and you're looking at that growth opportunity. I also want to just note here, when we're thinking about, we do always build on our skills, focus on our state standards, and have the best education for all. And also, I'd just like to note this because, once again, data is kind of one of my things. We have a large growth in the number of emergent bilingual students that we continue to have as a district, the number of special education students that we are serving as a district. That does require additional staff at times to be able to support that. So just noting some of those things, I think that's important if you're looking at some of our presentations that we've done in the past about our percentage of growth. Another thing that I think that is very near and dear when we're thinking about recruiting our families to CISD, and when we're thinking about open enrollment, when programs we can bring, we need to get that feedback. We do need to ask families. So if we're asking and we open up enrollment and more alongside our borders, what are you looking for when you're looking and going to a district? What programs or offerings do you want for your kids? So that way, we can still make sure that we're having that recruitment, not only for new families coming in, but our current families that are here in CISD. Another, another two things, I'm sorry, y'all know I'm a talker, but I'm going fairly fast as usual. I think a big thing, and I'm just going to read these because they're, they're, they're good statements, I feel like. Recruitment and retention for educators, leaders, and support staff. Sustaining all efforts to make sure we continue to have the amazing staff who put kids first, love our kids, take risk in learning, are innovative and creative in their practices, and are ready to continue accepting challenges and growing with these opportunities through the lens of teaching and learning. Without them, these new learning opportunities will not exist. And my final thing, whatever future decision is made, consolidation, one, two, whatever it may be, we need to continue growing our program opportunities to meet the needs of our changing world. CISD must continue being on the cutting edge of learning within public education, and most of all, we must ensure we're taking care of our staff who have dedicated their lives to taking care of our kids, our families, and each other in CISD. Sorry. There we go. My final statement. Any questions or anything like that now? Sorry.
One, one thing I want to to highlight here is that the previous piece, the data-driven research, survey work that we're going to do will help define what we need to do in choice offerings. And so if you think about sequence, if that work is done the rest of the fall semester and the spring, that's going to give the, the new team an opportunity in 26, 27 to, to begin to develop those programs. One of the things that I think will distinguish this is, is talking to your, if we're, if we're talking about choice programs in elementary, I think it is, is providing our principals the opportunity to be able to have choice programs that, that align with their campus, that align with their passion. I think of a student, had a, had a story told to me today of a student that was in Pinkerton last year. The parent was not supportive at all of Pinkerton's closure. And then the, the student, when Pinkerton did close, they moved the student to Wilson to be a part of the IB program. When the student got to Wilson, they found the IB program, but they also found a dynamic musical theater program that she has fallen in love with. And so now you've got a student, because of that dynamic program, that now is developing a passion for the arts. One day, you may see that student be the lead of the high school musical. And I think that's the vision for what we want these choice programs to look like. Part of the reason I think the challenge will be for the administrative team to really incorporate those principles into the conversations of, of what that's going to look like. So incredibly excited about that. Appreciate Dr. Brooks for her presentation.
Do you guys have any questions for Dr. Brooks?
Only a point of clarification, because it was been brought to me about pre-K and like bringing kids in, and that should be a revenue stream. But can you explain a little bit about the funding of pre-K? And there's like a state mandated requirement of that as well as the, if we, if we open up to, to regular tuition.
Perfect. I'm going to let Ms. Serkar do a little bit of that.
So the state funds pre-K at 50% of average daily attendance. Pre-K classes tend to be more expensive because you have a teacher and an aide in that classroom. So it costs more to run a pre-K classroom. The state does not want districts to make money on, on running pre-K. So they require then that the tuition amount that you can charge be basically the cost of running the program.
So by expanding pre-K, we still have like a 50% loss, but it's more like a way to build the pipeline. Because if you're in pre-K and you're already there in the school, you get to experience the administrators, the teachers who are at the next level, and then hopefully stay and return from kindergarten.
Yes, absolutely. It's definitely a marketing strategy that provides a service for community members, staff members, but is not going to generate a great deal of revenue to offset the deficit.
Just to clarify, I, I think that conversation, those that are in pre-K that qualify were funded. Those that we charge, like, like if we open it up for paying, they would pay the full cost of what it costs us. So we're not, we're not taking a loss on those that would be, you know, for a fee, I guess, essentially.
Yes, that's correct. We would not get ADA funding for anyone that did not qualify. Anyone who was paying tuition, they would be paying tuition to offset our costs.
Thank you.
There's also a additional threshold that we need to, or hurdle that we will need to get over with the state, and that is that they are looking at partners, they are looking at pre-K partners and saying, if you want to open a, open up your pre-K program for tuition, you have to look first, we need to examine all of the community partners that are offering pre-K in your district. And then someone at TEA, that person has not been designated yet, but somebody at TEA will then decide whether the district is allowed to expand their pre-K program or if we would need to send students to one of those partners. At that point in time, the funding would also go to the partner. So we have some additional hurdles that were passed in the 89th legislative session that we will have to consider prior to implementing any new pre-K programs.
The next thing that we want to, to look at and discuss are some, are some new options for enrollment, expanding our enrollment options. This is not, this is not choice. This is, this is actually students that do not reside in the district and discussing how we could actually bring some students in. Again, looking at numbers, if we could bring in 200 students through this option, it's about the same as closing one additional elementary campus. So I'll turn it over to Ms. Eichel.
Good evening, Board, Community, Mr. Williams. For those who don't know me, I am Kristin Eichel. I'm one of the Assistant Superintendents for Administrative Services. So all the things that don't fall under Dr. Brooks with CNI tend to fall under my umbrella. But staffing, as you've heard through questions, enrollment numbers and open enrollment fall to my team and my department. Interestingly enough, for those that don't know it, looking at bringing in students through open enrollment is not a new tool for Capella ISD. It's something that the board that was in place almost 15 years ago initially approved because, believe it or not, the entire city of Capella is not zoned to Capella ISD. And so open enrollment first started as a program to allow anybody that lived in the city of Capella to, to come to our school district. So as we're looking for ways to increase revenue in our district, and we've talked about ways that we're going to begin to explore how to bring students back or bring students that live in our district to us initially, we also want to explore options about potentially continuing to open our enrollment to areas that border our district because research says that the most successful open enrollment programs include neighborhoods that border a district because the proximity, many times families are in those neighboring neighborhoods are already involved in the communities through sporting activities, through church activities, through other community activities. And so there's a high correlation there. And then looking at other special programs. And so the opportunities or the options that we would want to pursue moving forward and have further discussions to refine, you know, this first semester so that we can implement increased enrollment through the limited open enrollment program for next year is the framework that we're asking, that we talk about tonight. So there are three key, key areas, looking at new neighborhoods surrounding Capella ISD, looking at allowing our grandparents that live in the district grandchildren to attend. Currently in policy, we have the ability to do that if a grandparent is a primary after-school caregiver, but there's some limitations on what that care has to look like and actually the age of our students to qualify. So what we'd be looking at here is, is coming to you and asking for a revision in policy that would open that wide up, that if a grandparent has grandchildren and they want to attend in our district regardless of the age or grade level, there'd be the opportunity to do that. And then we'd also like to bring forward and define through policy in the future the legacy program, which would allow individuals who have graduated from Capella ISD, who don't still have the connection here through their parents and the grandparents that we've just talked about, to be able to bring their children to the district as well. And again, we feel like there's already buy-in from those families, whether it's through grandparents or legacy, to the Capella United because they have been here and they've been part of the district. So we will have future conversations. But trustee Matthew previously asked, and I think it's important for our community to know and understand what the data is through our current open enrollment programs and what neighborhoods we have included, what special program we have with the city, and what the yield is. So what you see on the screen tonight are currently the neighborhoods who have been included in our limited open enrollment program. And the reason I say limited is because there are some districts who have a complete open enrollment program where anybody, regardless of where they live, can enroll in a district. Again, over the last almost 15 years through different boards and different administrations, Capella ISD has been very intentional with the neighborhoods and the programs put in place, again, to balance the needs and the wants and the desires of the people that live in the community. Because as we've heard tonight, people move here for very specific reasons with the neighborhoods. And again, what research, research shows is a successful program when you do look at border, bordering neighborhoods. So as I said, initially, when limited open enrollment was brought forward, those neighborhoods that have Capella in the parentheses, those indicate the cities, not necessarily school districts that these neighborhoods are in. And the number of students that we currently have from those areas attending our district through limited open enrollment. And so you can see we have some neighborhoods that are the city of Capella, we have some neighborhoods that are the city of Lewisville, and two years ago, for the first time, we added two neighborhoods that are in the city of Irving. So currently, we have 255 students that are attending school within our district. When you multiply that by the $6,160 that Mr. Williams expressed that, that is brought in with each of those students, currently, we have revenue of $1,570,800 that's coming into the district through this program. This year, we have the most students that we, than we've ever had attending through open enrollment. We are up by about 13 students from last year. Last year, at our highest point, we had 242 students attending through limited open enrollment. But you can see, to get that 255 students, there are quite a few households between the number of homes in the areas that have been approved and the number of apartment units that are approved. And so when you look at the bottom, you know, to get that yield, we are getting .073 students per household by our neighborhoods. We also have one, what I call special program, and that's a partnership with the city of Capella. And so employees of the city are able to bring their students to our district. Currently, there are 482 city employees, and we have six students attending here in the district that are children of those city employees. And so the point in this, one is to be transparent so you can see where we're drawing students, but also to say, this would be one tool to continue to work towards balancing our budget. It's not the magic bullet, as some maybe have assumed, if we just throw open our borders and let everybody come, come one, come all. It helps. It's an improvement, but it's one piece of the puzzle that we're working to put together to right-size our budget and continue to move forward. The last piece that I thought was interesting to be able to share and just make sure everybody understands, limited open enrollment students are placed on campuses and in classrooms where seats are available and enrollment is lower. When families sign up to be part of the limited open enrollment process, they're asking to be a part of the district, but they don't get to choose where their students attend. We do work to group students that are coming from those areas to be able to attend a school together, again, to help build that community, to help with carpooling, because transportation is not provided to families who choose to attend our district through limited open enrollment. When you look at this, you can see that, again, we have students attending in all grade levels through limited open enrollment. Of the 255 currently in attendance, 114 are at the elementary level, so that's 45%. And 141 are at the secondary level, that's 55%. So what we've seen is that typically when students start in our district, they remain in our district, and that's why you see those numbers increase. Typically, students enter our district at what I call transition grade levels. So we see high interest at kindergarten, then again at sixth grade when middle school starts, then again at high school when, you know, students are any, entering ninth and sometimes even 10th grade, the way that we're set up with a ninth grade center and then a 10th grade program. So I welcome any questions you have about the program that we have in place or what our steps would be to bring forward conversations about what additional neighborhoods, based on data and interest in proximity we can bring forward, as well as the policy specifics that would be coming forward for grandparents and. specifics that would be coming forward for grandparents and legacies.
Go ahead, you go.
Can you talk to me about, on the previous slide, which of these neighborhoods were added in the last year or two? I know we've expanded, uh, kind of, open enrollment by neighborhood for the past couple of years.
Right. So for, like I said, for many years, um, it was only the neighborhoods that are marked city of Capella, and for a number of years when the program was introduced, students had to enter at the elementary level. They could continue through middle and high school, but they couldn't enter at middle and high school. And so it's been about eight years ago where we worked with the board and we opened up those city of Capella areas and open enrollment that students and families could enter at any grade levels, because what we saw is that families were moving into those open enrollment areas, and they had kids across grade levels, and they didn't want to split their students between two different school districts. So that was the first expansion. And then it's been four or five years ago that the expansion into the, the Lewisville area, mostly up around the Market Street area, so again, the borders of, on the northern end of, of Capella were added. Two years ago, um, this is the second year that Hackberry Creek and, uh, the Villas at Mustang Park were added, and we didn't add any new open enrollment areas as we were planning for this year that we're currently in. With the consolidation of D L I, that, the closure and the movement of Pinkerton, we made the decision to, to make those moves, right-size those boundary realignments that took place with those programs before looking at expanding beyond that.
My question was going to be, so when we, when we looked at the placement map, I think it was the, the next slide after, it was out, the district's decision on placement to put them in those schools based on the open slots that are available, right?
Correct. So you're going to see some higher totals at some campuses that, in the last couple of years, had traditionally lower enrollment numbers. Um, you'll see very few students attending in our southern schools at elementary. There are a couple, and that's mostly because as they've been students in the district, maybe initially placed in a northern school where there was room, they've since qualified for a program that they've needed that specialized support, and that program is on a campus in the south part of our district. Um, and then you see as students move through, you know, they have the same choice and opportunity, but, you know, the choices get smaller, ninth grader, New Tech at, at the high school level and, and beyond.
And who chooses the campus? Is that done internally with your team as, as the enrollment availability is there? Or do they come in saying, I want to go to this campus or that campus?
There is not an opportunity on the open enrollment sheets for families to indicate a preference. And so we do that based on enrollment numbers, and it's, it's actual enrollment numbers. So there is, um, an order, um, to which we do enrollment of our current students, um, in the spring, we do, um, enrollment of new students in the summer. We have transfer processes amongst elementary and secondary that take place both in the spring, the first window, and again, early in the summer. So the individuals that live in our district do have the first opportunity to enroll and/or transfer, if that's something that they want to do at any level. And then after that, it's mid to late summer, um, that open, new open enrollment students are placed based on where there's space and availability. Um, once a student is enrolled through the open enrollment process, as long as they continue to meet the attendance and discipline criteria to be in our district through that program, then they continue to, to move through the campus in which they've been placed.
Did you have a question? Oh, I thought you.
I, I have a question.
So go ahead.
Okay. Uh, two questions for Ms. Eichel. We talk about feedback a lot of times. For the families that have chosen limited open enrollment, um, can you talk a little about initially what their thought processes, processes are? And after they've been here a while, has that process changed any, any additional thoughts they've had about the benefits of limited open enrollment and being here in Capella ISD?
Well, again, I think when you look at the numbers, um, and that, right now, our percentage is higher at secondary. I mean, we do have students that enter our district at the secondary level, as we've said, but that's a much lower number than those who start at the elementary level. So we have seen, you know, that they come into the district, they become involved not only in the academics and the extracurriculars, but again, you see them at, at community events, involved in, you know, religious organizations, you know, organizations and activities outside the school. So again, I think there's that community connection. Um, I don't know if you're asking this in regards to the process. In the last year or two, we've tried to make the re-enrollment process for families that are attending here under open enrollment, that are already part of the process, easier and earlier than new families. Um, so we have worked to, to make sure that they, once they are here, they want to stay here and they feel like they're, they're part of the family. Um, so I don't know if that accurately answers your question.
Yeah. I, I was going more for, once they get here and see the process in place, the education that's being received, what has been their feedback from that above beyond? Because they came from somewhere else for a reason, and then once they come here, did they share, or do they share their thoughts about, you know, the benefits of being here?
Absolutely. And so that i- is, again, our best marketing piece even for this is, is through word of mouth. In fact, you know, I was talking to our athletic director, um, Kit Pell, this summer, and he has a lot of families come together through the different summer camps that, um, are, uh, led through athletics, and it is through word of mouth and the positive experiences that those families have shared, that there have been individuals from other neighborhoods that are participating in those summer camps that are asking him, that are contacting our office about, you know, when can our neighborhood be considered? And so, yes, again, I, I think people get here, they value the education, and, and they stay here through this ability to enroll through limited open enrollment.
Thank you. Uh, and I have a, oh, Nicole, I'm sorry.
Go, you go.
Uh, because why is the process question not necessarily about?
Okay. So, one of, I have, I have three things. The first one is, it's just an observation. If we have two hundred and fifty-five kids right now, it is clear that open enrollment is not the answer to keeping all of our campuses open necessarily from a financial, like, if we have an aggressive Cowboys United, if we got two hundred and fifty, three hundred and fifty, four hundred kids, that's great, but I believe, I understand, we need to get at least two hundred to stay level for next year. So, I just am processing, okay, we're talking about doubling or more what we already have. So, just of note to my fellow trustees, um, the other thing I think it's important for us to be mindful of as trustees, is we also have community members who don't have kids enrolled, who feel like opening, like, if you've got kids enrolled, you're like, yay, this helps keep our buildings open. If you don't have kids enrolled, you might feel like we're subsidizing families from other school districts to come to Capella ISD. So there are mixed opinions about it in our community. So I just think those two things are worth noting. And my last thing is a request, to be fully transparent, I am a grandparent, some of you have found me with my grandchild, and I just want to make sure that when we do the, um, revisions, that the legacy and the grandparent language is separated, so that I can abstain from the grandparent, even though my kids are legacies.
Uh, my, I was going to ask a process question, not necessarily, uh, from the open enrollment standpoint where you're looking at it, but in sorts of evaluating, uh, the enrollment and seats on a campus, right? Is that, is that something that you guys do kind of every year or, um, throughout the year of, like, how, how many kids are at that campus and then working with, um, the campus level administrators about planning and, and, and all of that?
So we do. And so there is, uh, some confusion maybe is the right word. So, there is the ability, the number of seats that a campus can hold. So if every classroom, excuse me, had a teacher and the number of students that it could hold, our footprint campuses, um, well, aside from Valley Ranch that's now been renovated, can comfortably hold six hundred kids. That's assuming every, you know, room is being used, there's a teacher and there's students. Um, you know, in pre-K through fourth grade, when we talk about class size, you know, that ideal is twenty-two or less, that's what the state sets, that what, that's what we strive for. Um, and when you get into fifth grade, you know, we target about twenty-five per class. We have campuses that are very efficiently staffed, but not every room is, is being used, if that's what you're asking. And so we look at what the enrollment projection is going to be for a campus on any given year. We also look at the number of students in a previous grade and, and roll them up. So it's much easier and more accurate when you're looking at first through fifth grade staffing and numbers than it is for that pre-K kindergarten, because you're shooting in, in the dark a little bit for that. And then we determine how many teachers are needed. So, um, some of these campuses, um, are lower enrollment right now. There may only be two or three sections of a grade level on a campus, so there's empty rooms per se on the campus, but we're still working to staff. So is that what, kind of what you're asking?
It was, it was more about the, the process that you all go through to look at that enrollment and staffing wise, uh, and just wanted to make sure I leveled set on that.
Yeah. And then, which is a good point, related to limited open enrollment, this has been a process that in the almost fifteen years it's been in place, that has not increased cost to the district. We've not added teachers for this, we have filled seats in classrooms. So, you know, when we looked to place, you know, the kindergarten students this year, we looked at where there were teachers already in place, but those classes were not, you know, near or approaching, quite honestly, even twenty students per class. And we placed them, again, in, in groups for the community, we placed them strategically so we're not having to move teachers from one campus to another if enrollment's not what we're expecting it to be. But there has not been additional cost, because we've not added teachers. We've filled, you know, if we have a class of, of fourteen or fifteen first graders, and we have, you know, we want to get close to that twenty-two, because that's efficient, um, then that's where we look to place the students.
So, that, that ends our discussion on, on Cowboys United. Uh, so, we will take no action on that tonight, I believe.
Correct. So, so the action we really need to take just is on, you know, from a marketing standpoint, we don't really need to, to take action. I think, my understanding, right? Uh, Dr. Shivers will need the autonomy to implement this and, and make adjustments.
That's correct.
But we'll need to make, there's some policy changes that'll come along with it, that you guys will bring to us, um, in the next meeting or two, so that we can do that work. But you can start, essentially start working on this tomorrow on pieces that don't require policy changes, correct? I just want to make sure we're, I'm understanding things correctly.
So, you know, the only, the only question would be, you know, approving contracts in relation to any marketing effort. Uh, the data-driven retention and recruitment initiative, uh, is going to be relatively pricey, and so it might, it might require a, uh, it might require approval of contract, but we could do that, uh, you could do that in an October meeting.
Right. Once those are bid out and.
That's correct.
Okay.
That's correct.
Oh, it's on a call-off, it's, we're good.
Okay.
Okay. By board? Yep. It's on by board. All right.
There's not going to be a motion on approving it? Is that what I'm hearing?
It doesn't require, marketing itself doesn't require approving. It's the, the pieces within it, you know, the policy changes, any, anything that would not be through the co-op, contract-wise, we would need to approve. But, you know, from a, from a marketing standpoint, I imagine going forward, we'll probably start seeing the, uh, S P G initials, you know, on, on the, on the updates as we get those. Um, that's, you know, priority goal is, is what that is. Um, but in terms of just saying, you know, we're going to move forward with this, it doesn't require board approval, and then that gives autonomy to, um, there's some flexibility to, to Dr. Shivers to implement, you know, as we've been discussing it, and keep us updated.
So, I, I will say, one thing that I will, I'll encourage you to do is, uh, is continue to get regular reports from the administrative team on efforts, uh, toward implementation. I, I think that, uh, I think that metrics are, should be in place as you, as you talk about goal-setting, and are you hitting the numbers that you're, that you're, that, uh, that you're striving for? I think that's going to be an important piece as well. Uh, just that report out to, uh, to this governing body, but also to the community as a whole.
I was going to wait for the. The motion to kind of do some discussion, so I'll just jump in here and start off with thank you, uh, Superintendent Williams. Um, this has been, uh, a paradigm shift, what, exactly what you talked about, and talking about what we want to be as opposed to what we have to cut. And, uh, so, that fresh approach, uh, kind of blew my mind, frankly. And so I just want to say, thank you for that, the idea of the Cowboys United. It brings together a lot of the questions, I think, that we've been circling around these past couple of years, which is why are people leaving? Um, but not just, why does Lee Walker think people are leaving, but let's actually dig deep and pay someone, not do additional staff, not have Angela Shelley Brown do more and her staff do more, but actually put the dollars where we need to, to, um, to get that information. I'm very excited about that. We already have one grandparent enrollment recruit, so I think that we can put one, and that, you know, I've, I've mentioned that for years, so that's really exciting to see that, those creative things. I want to piggyback in, uh, on what you just said, which is, we look at Dr. Shivers and as we as a board talk about our superintendent priority goals, it immediately thinks to me that cow, appears to me that Cowboys United would be, uh, one of, may be one of those superintendent goals. And what's really important to me is that we have benchmarks and metrics associated with this, especially as we talk about potential, um, school consolidations. What I've been hearing loud and clear is that our community will buy in as long as there is a plan, um, a big picture, a strategy, and I think this can be that. I am curious, as we workshop and get further into what it, the, the details look like, do we have triggers that if we don't hit certain numbers, that means we look at, uh, something else? All, all I'm saying is that I love this, I think it's a great, um, frank, it's a great idea, all of that behind it, but in order for me to feel really comfortable about this being strategy, it has to have benchmarks and metrics associated with it. So I'm looking forward to what that's going to look like, um, as we transfer from one to the other. But I'll finish the way I started, which is, thank you. Thank you for this. This is something four months ago hadn't even crossed my mind, and, um, this big package, um, the, the bow and the, the thinking about it gets me really excited, so thank you.
I, I do appreciate the comment, but I, I will, again, defer, uh, that praise back to just, uh, the team approach and, uh, and all of the work that the team has put in to, uh, to really bring this forward, so.
I'm incredibly excited about, about the possibilities, um, and the way that we're approaching this, that we aren't just adding on one more, one more thing. One question I have, and frankly, I'm relieved that this is a potential solution for a second elementary. I really, really would have told you in the spring, I thought we would probably be talking about two elementaries this fall. Um, so I'm delighted about that. I am wondering, what, what, um, degree of likelihood of success do we feel like this plan has? And I know this is putting people on the spot a little bit, but I think it would be, if we're not talking about two elementaries, like, I want some degree of confidence that we aren't going to have to have this conversation in, about elementaries in twelve, twelve months or twenty-four months. Do we think, are we seeing things around other parts of the state? Like, tell, tell me a little more about how likely, likely we think this is to be successful.
So, some, some schools are, are doing this well, um, in our area. Um, I believe that, uh, Garland ISD, that we drive through, I, I have the opportunity to drive through in the morning, Garland is offering some choice programs. It started with choice high schools, uh, but it is, is really evolved to a K-12 approach. Um, I, I'll encourage the team going forward to spend some time with Garland, what worked, what didn't work. Um, I think the degree of success will be dependent on, on one key thing, and that's intentionality. Um, I think that you have to be incredibly intentional in this approach, and again, I'm going to lean into one thing that I said early, um, I think that you have to involve your stakeholders in it, you have to talk to the experts in the field. Um, I, I had great conversations with our P T O presidents, um, and then great conversations with our elementary principals. They, they understand, uh, they understand what will, what will attract and what will draw students. Um, the only thing that I will tell you in regard to a conversation twelve months from now, I do think that you need to provide, uh, some time for this to work.
Of course.
You really do. I, you know, if, if, uh, if I, I would say pick up the paper, no one does that anymore, uh, but if I, if I get online and I look at the paper, or I, I'm, or I see news media and you're having this discussion next October, I'll, I'll be disappointed, not in anyone, but, uh, we have put a lot of, of our, of our time, our energy in this, and, uh, I, I hope that this is the impetus to, to really, uh, the word I've been using is stem the tide. Um, if we do not, if we don't stop the outflow of students in the district, there will be a strong consideration that the next conversation may be which middle. a strong consideration that the next conversation may be which middle school will you be looking at closing. And again, that won't be a fun conversation either. Ms. Brown?
Ms. Williams, I want to piggyback with you because trustee Matthew and I, myself, we were in a session with Dr. Lopez, and he talked about the work that they do in Garland. But also, I get to hear from the trustees over there because they serve on the North Texas Area Association of Schools were with me as well. And so, I think, you know, to your point, I think that will definitely be an opportunity for success. And I think, you know, when we even did the open enrollment, I can remember when that started out, people did not have an idea of what those numbers would look like. But the intentionality that you talked about was there and the support was there. And I think, I believe this could work out. I love the duality of both the, within the district getting students, but also going outside, because there are people on the outside that have the same values and desires that we have. And I think the combination of those two can grow those numbers and make those sizable if we do it with intentionality, but also be inviting and when they come in, just to make them feel like, hey, this is a place for you to be. So, thank you.
Ms. Brown?
I would just share that when we first started talking about this, that, you know, we began, we've been marketing for a number of years, people. I've heard someone say, we're just starting. No, 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 we've been marketing for actually quite a while. Since I came on board, seven years ago, I brought marketing with me. It's a passion. And so, I would say to you, we worked last year on a very specific project, kind of as a test case, to see what would move the needle forward. And we used families that had left us for charter school in particular at pre-K and K. And so, we looked at this group of 100 families and really did strategic targeting to those families through lots of different methods, very different, some traditional, some non-traditional, some digital. And we were able to pretty quickly see 11 of those families come back to us pretty quickly. And then, we expanded that to, through the year, to other families that had left us. And overall, we brought 65 families back from charter schools. I would not say they're all because of marketing. There's lots of varied reasons that families make choices. But we can show that there was evidence, some correlation to the work that we did. And that was on a very small scale. I'm, so, it will take some time and effort, and that is why the data-driven retention and recruitment piece is critical, because that's the time when we're going to establish the strategic plan, the metric. So, I need that time to dig in deep, to bring back to you those metrics that will really be accurate. Does that make sense? So, that, I want to, you know, say that. And I think I said it the first time I presented it, that that is a critical piece of this. Because if not, we're just kind of shooting in the dark, and that's not fair to any of us. So, we need to be accurate in those numbers, and that's really why that piece is very important.
The way returning 65 students nets the district $400,000. And $400,000, again, just is a chip away of that deficit. But that is also something that is sustainable, that is year after year, we will continue to see that. So, your communications staffs will be commended for that work.
Brown, I wanted to add to thank you personally in public for your team for providing me information, to be able to talk to families. That is something I've tried to do around if I hear about anybody considering charter school or anything at a pre-K, to have conversation. And the marketing materials you've provided have helped greatly in that. So, thank you and your entire team for that.
Thank you. Please always share it on WhatsApp.
Thanks.
I have a comment. Angela, I would say the same. No, I don't have a question. I just have a comment. And I would piggyback on Joby's comment. Thank you for always, you know, providing us with the marketing material, those numbers when they see it, right away it makes sense. And thank you for this plan. My I wonder question is, what specific student-centered outcomes does this plan aim to achieve? And how will we measure success? Which partially, Mr. Williams already answered, that we have to have, you know, those accountability piece. But I'm just curious to see what this plan would unlock. Thank you.
We're excited to bring it back to you, and we will answer that specific question.
Yes, thank you.
Okay, so, the next thing that we are going to discuss is campus consolidation. We're going to look at four different critical considerations tonight. We're going to talk about district enrollment growth, geography and proximity, regeneration. Regeneration, I think the key aspect there is ADA generation. How can we continue to generate new students in the district? And then, finally, facilities expansion, those four things. We know that you've got questions and you'll have comments, and so, we are going to go through that. So, we are going to lead off our district enrollment growth by hearing from our new superintendent. While you're starting, I am going to exit for about two minutes.
So, one of the pieces that we want to begin looking forward and getting more information on is really the difference between our district enrollment, where our students are residing, capacity of our campuses, and what that looks like for our campus as a whole. One of the pieces that I'd like to do is make sure that we have a good understanding what that looks like in the next coming five years as well. So, as we work with our demographers to understand what are our five-year projections that we have, what does our enrollment look like? And then, really looking at our district as a whole. So, some of us, as you've looked at it, understanding if we know what our projections are going to be in five years, then what does Cowboys United mean? How many kids do we actually have to recapture to stay at a just where we are level? And then, what is the number that we have to capture or recapture to gain that decrease that we're projected within our enrollment? The second piece to that, and this is, the team will talk to it in a little bit, is actually understanding then what that looks like as far as proximity for our campuses, what that looks like for our families and our community, and what that looks like at the secondary level as well. One of the pieces that we need to do is begin to understand by numbers, can we have feeder patterns that give long-term, consistent feeder patterns for our neighborhoods, for our families, and keep our schools aligned with a certain set of middle schools instead of having to potentially close, like you heard, or potentially change boundaries multiple years in a row? So, the goal is to provide for you what looks like a five-year projection of growth and enrollment within each of our campuses, to look at what that could potentially mean financially for us and decisions, decisions that do center around some consolidation as well as budget constraints.
So, one thing that Dr. Shivers pointed out was, I think, as we really started looking at a lot of this, it wasn't where we are now, but a lot of it was where we will be three to five years from now. I don't think anyone really has a whole lot of appetite to be able to come in and continue to, and continue to redraw boundaries on a regular basis. And so, I think that that was very important. We also need to understand what's going on across the district, and I think that's vital as well. So, the next thing we wanted to look at is, we do want to show you, we do want to show your proposed boundary. This is, again, with, this again is with Town Center as the school that would be consolidated. We have made a change from the last that you saw. This is, you now see Cottonwood Creek. Some of the students in Town Center would be going to Cottonwood Creek, some would be going to Lakeside. The dividing line currently is Lodge. Lodge is about halfway in the geographic area currently of where Town Center is. Half of the, so, the students on the west side of Lodge would be going toward Cottonwood Creek. On the east side, they would be going toward Lakeside. The boundary, of course, is Sandy Lake. We shifted our concept from really looking at our boundaries being north-south to east-west. And so, you can really see it most prevalent there. In the, there on the north side of the district, some areas that we had originally scheduled to go to Cottonwood, we have put them back on the Denton Creek zone. No real changes on the center, except there is an area, and I'm going to, I'll point at this one. But this area here was scheduled in the original to be a part of Mockingbird. We have now rolled it back to Austin. And then, there's around 80 homes that will be developed in this area. They're new homes, but those homes will be also scheduled to go to Austin as well. Mockingbird is picking up one additional set of students. We have an apartment complex where we have about 80 students in the Valley Ranch area, and those students would be going to Mockingbird. And let me see if I can point at that one. And that's that group. Not much change on the south side of the district, Canyon Ranch. Valley Ranch, you notice that it's fairly small footprint-wise, but they do have quite a bit of density there primarily because of, but they do have apartment complexes there that it creates a lot of density. Canyon Ranch and then Lee. We do have 114, south of 114 continuing to be a part of Canyon Ranch as well. And so, that's what your Denton, that's what your elementary, we're calling it our elementary Plan III map would be. Dr. Shivers, do you have?
Yeah.
Yep.
I think what's important, though, is while this is a version of a plan, it's to be able to come forward and show multiple options for you and for you to have some discussion about what that looks like, to look at numbers and to also see what that plan looks like for the next one to five years. So, building this out and looking at multiple options and giving you multiple versions is our next goal.
So, we had not had, we had not had, we had just, we felt like we couldn't get, we couldn't get a map ready. There are still some work, there's some tweaking and refining to be done with this. And so, we didn't believe we could have a map ready for you. Also, we, I think in our discussion last Monday, there was a thought that you needed some time, you needed to be able to see a map, and then we can continue to refine that, so.
One quick question, mobility. Because when you talked about Valley Ranch, you have a high density of apartments and that turnover, why the number may be the same, the students turn over at a higher rate. Is that a part of this consideration when looking at maps?
Yeah, so, that was actually one thing that Dr. Brooks talked to us a lot about as she was going, is Dr. Brooks, is the doctor in the house? So, you know, we had, maybe I can fill in some, but because of the mobility factor, it does create some scheduling issues at Valley Ranch. And so, we felt like that if we were able to maybe pull off one of those units, there she is, if we could pull off one of those units, then that would, and send those students to Mockingbird, then that might help balance a little bit of the mobility that we look at. Right?
Yes, sir. Sorry, I had to take a little bio break. There we are. Yes, when you're looking at mobility as a whole, definitely that has an impact on learning when you're thinking about the coming and going within that. And so, Valley Ranch does have the highest mobility rate at about 20 to 22% right now. So, looking at our other campuses, that some do not have almost any mobility rate within some of the things. You're always going to have comings and goings of families moving in, but you're really looking at almost that revolving door that can happen. You do see that a lot of times with our apartments, specifically because a lot of our families move into Coppell to come here and also buy a home, or if they're coming and living in an apartment in Coppell, or getting a home in another district, possibly when something comes open there.
Looking at the map, one thing that I do want to point, on one of the demographer's maps that he sent, there, it was reflective of a future building site of an elementary in the, in or around Lee. And there is no long-range plan to build an elementary there, not build one and close one in the north. And so, I don't think that's a part of the long-range consideration. There you go.
Okay. Okay, so, for this section, we're talking about campus consolidation. However, we're not going to vote on this today.
Correct.
And so, walk me through, like, kind of what the point of all this discussion is.
An opportunity for you to see maps, for us to have a conversation about what the boundary alignment would be. But also, I think it's an opportunity for us to kind of look at the district as a whole and not just really focus on what's going on on the north side of the district. We have to keep in mind that on the south side of the district, we are seeing growth and continuing to see growth. And it's important for us to make sure that we continue to have capacity to facilitate that growth, if that makes sense.
About choices, as you were saying that you're going to bring forward, are those choices with different elementaries? Is that choices with changing the map? What, I'm a little confused.
Sure, absolutely. So, one of the pieces in looking today, last week, really beginning to have a good understanding of what our projected enrollment looks like for the next five years. So, the first piece, we know we're here because of needing to address our budget. A big piece of understanding what our budget will look like is understanding our projected enrollment for the next five years. In understanding our projected enrollment for the next five years, we also have to take into account, what do we reasonably see as enrollment from limited open enrollment? What do we feel like we are going to capture with Cowboys United and then our legacy or grandparent enrollment? When we look at the numbers then, from the current campus capacity that we have, our current enrollment, projected residencies that we have for students in there, and we combine it with the numbers that we would project for that, that gives us a more accurate understanding then of the total student enrollment that we would have, giving us a better understanding then of where we could foresee opportunity for growth within our schools for the next five to 10 years, and where we would be able to operate at our maximum level of capacity as well as efficiency. So, trying to take more numbers and give you a better, accurate understanding of what that actually looks like over five years compared to the district.
Okay, okay. So, we've pressed pause on voting on the proposal tonight. So, what does that mean moving forward? Are we going to discuss it? Do you guys have clarity? I just, I'm confused about what our process, our steps forward are.
Our process tonight is to get, I think, get more information, have the ability for us to have a discussion. The plan would be, you know, again, to have votes scheduled potentially on the 27th. Again, I say potentially at the earliest. I think depending on the results of our conversations tonight. But we do have a recommendation that's been brought to us, and that currently is, you know, what we've got to work towards confirming or denying.
Share my understanding at least also, right? I think the other part of it is like getting a deeper understanding of why, like Town Center Elementary was recommended. And if we have general questions or need to see other information or more information about why Town Center is, then we can gather that information and ask them for that info. And then, as related to the maps that would result from that, and then we could make a decision on the recommendation. That's my understanding, at least of what would happen after this.
So, I'll weigh in trustee Walker, because I can see that look on your face, and that's that look like, okay. I think, you know, when you look at this, and I'm not trying to put words in your mouth, and I'm looking at this, saying that if the pause is. and I'm looking at this, saying that if the pause is put on for tonight, then the conversation would be juxtaposed to including Town Center as a part of this overall plan, and that we'd be having a different discussion along the lines of what should these, what is the capacity from a standpoint of the next five years in total? Whether it be, it's not about a campus, it's just in total, right? And so, then, do we have an opportunity here to understand where we can gain enrollment across the district at the elementary level, is what I would be looking at, as opposed to looking at Town Center as being off the map, and looking at this in a more broad sense of enrollment generally from the elementary standpoint. So, if we say that we have X number of students today, and then we have a number of students that live in our district boundaries but don't attend our schools, what does that look like? Where does that fall into this? And if we can get additional students outside of that, what would that look like overlaying that? Talk about the hypothetical of this, but if we're saying that we're looking at Town Center today still as a part of this number, I think that creates confusion in looking at the maps, because you're still assuming that Town Center is that school here on this map, versus having a broader discussion about elementary capacity and enrollment numbers.
I think, I'll chime in on what you're saying. I think if there's a recommendation, for me, if there's a recommendation on the table, it's helpful to know the full plan, right? So, if a consolidation is going to take place, where are the students that we currently know residing, you know, in terms of campus, where will they be going? What does that movement look like? So, I think all of that fits together, you know, into the full plan. And I think, you know, if we could look back to a year ago, I think that was one mistake that we made, was we made one decision, and then we came back two, three, four months later and kind of tidied it up. And that created a lot of anxiety and angst, and quite frankly, I think, put staff behind in being able to make some of those staffing decisions that they needed to make. So, whether we want to separate these out and say, we're going to have two votes, which that was, that is the plan, I guess, would still remain the plan going forward. I think it's helpful, at least for me, to know, okay, if we're doing this, then we're going to be getting this. And again, that could change a little bit, but at least knowing that general direction for me is helpful.
So, in looking at the map, I think one thing is important to consider. Currently, in this model, with Sandy Lake being the divider, you would have three campuses north of Sandy Lake. You would have three campuses between Sandy Lake and Beltline, and then you would have three south of Beltline. This map would be reflective of two campuses on the west side of Denton Tap that would continue to provide some geographic balance, for lack of a better term. It would provide Austin and Mockingbird in the center to be able to receive anticipated growth from the south, and some ADA generation, some regeneration there in the center of the district. It would provide Lakeside on the east side of the district as well. And so, in looking at the geography and the proposal, if you look at it as almost a, for lack of a better term, a tic-tac-toe board, where you've got three above, you've got three in the middle, three below, but then you have those in the, on the east-west lines as well. So, that was, that was a part of the thought process.
Yes, I'm just sort of curious, what's different about this map, or what has this map accomplished that the original proposal didn't?
So, the original proposal was reflective of Town Center really going a couple directions. Primarily, Town Center was to go to Austin. Some of Town Center, on their current east side of Town Center, was going to go, was going to go to Lakeside. And then, a very small percentage was going to go to, was going to go to, was go to, I'm sorry, to Denton Creek. And so, that's the primary change. The area in the green on the southeast side of Austin had been scheduled to go to Mockingbird, and then the apartment complex that we discussed was going to be in Valley Ranch. And so, that's kind of how the boundary has shifted according to, you know, some feedback we got, that if Town Center is closed, I think there was a preference that it be divided east-west instead of north-south.
Lee, that was your ask, Trustee Bentley, last week, wasn't it?
Yeah, I asked if, I didn't know if Cottonwood Creek and Lakeside could handle that, and I assumed north could based upon kind of the estimated numbers that we got last year, or last week, but I just wasn't sure if that was, you know, something that there was a threshold for capacity-wise. I mean, the unfortunate reality about our district, and this comes up, so basically, I'm seeing tonight is like, let's flesh out the proposal in front of us, is kind of how I'm seeing tonight, so that we know more about what we're voting on, is kind of where my mindset is at. So, I'm going to embrace what's in front of us. But the unfortunate reality of every time we do boundary realignment since I've been on the board, Sandy Lake always comes up, MacArthur always comes up, Denton Tap always comes up, Beltline always comes up. And those are some, you know, pretty miserable barriers between neighborhoods, which could very well be part of the reason we ended up with schools where we did in the first place.
I think, one of the things I'm looking for is, I think, take a half step back, because I think that is what a lot of the people in the community or things that, I think they feel like there's a missing piece to that. And I think it's something that you have to be able to look at, everything that's happened up until now, and as a, I mean, as a member of CERC, right, is something that I saw that is a piece of information that I would like to see, and see that updated a little bit based on enrollment numbers, and presented to the public about that. And that is, Zonda did a good evaluation of our schools based on kind of the band system. And there was an image of, there's a graphic of that, that I'd like to see updated and showed. And that showed a significant gap of enrolled students to seat capacity, like, in the different areas. And I think that primarily is like the missing piece to the conversation, right? We're filling in other things, but we're solving a problem, and that's the problem that I'd like to see, like, what is that problem we are trying to solve?
So, here's, and I agree with you. I think that, given the fact that the recommendation has been tabled, I would like to see what happens tonight would be some specific instructions for staff, and some conversations for you as to what you foresee you need to have to be able to make a better informed decision, if that makes sense. And so, and it needs to be, it needs to be clear. So, you know, I think as staff can make a note of what you need to see, I think one is, you know, what is CERC enrollment is what, involvement is what you're saying.
Not necessarily involvement, I know that that was, that was like a part of the CERC, like, committee's review, right? And that's, like, you showed the, you showed it how the, you showed how the, we built up from, you know, long-range visiting, planning, all the way up there, but there's like, there's a piece missing in there, and that is, I think, that is that piece that the public hasn't seen yet, to show why those banding, and why that is because CERC obviously recommended two schools, and there's a reason for that. And then, I think that that piece of information to be updated should be shared, so that everybody could see that, that piece, and it updated to where it is. That is a piece of information that I'd like to see, and I think that would continue this conversation in a way that the seven of us would have, and the community also would have that updated information to make an informed decision.
See what else is in the presentation.
So, while we're talking about the demographer and the map, I can tell you something that I would like to see. And it has come from the demographer historically, but what's our yield by current zone? So, we know that by municipality, typically, the demographer has reported that by municipality or kind of regions of the school district, but I'd like to see it by zone as it is now, and by zone proposed with the closure of Town Center going to a couple of other elementaries. And we can do, we can have a discussion all day long about whether or not that's the right metric, but it is something that we've used before, so I'd like to look at it as a reference point. Thank you.
I would love to see a heat map of where our children are. That would be very helpful. So, by age would be phenomenal, but I'll take any heat map of where our kids actually live. I'd like to see that graphic.
Trustee Walker, currently, and then future too.
Yeah, I mean, I think I'm particularly interested in where our pre-K2 reside, or Kinder 2 reside, but yeah, so.
I'll jump in, because Dr. Shivers, you just mentioned, you know, future, because I know that, you know, what's not included in the demographic reports really is, is it 74, 7500 units that are yet to be built in Cypress Waters? I forgot that 70, that 30% can be two and three bedrooms. So, we know at some point into the future, those will turn into yield and students, and so, kind of where that is, and when we talk about a heat map today, we've got to look into the future as well. So, just knowing where that is centrally located or concentrated, so that we see that futuristic look of, this is why, you know, the recommendation was made, this is why we talk about the bands, and, you know, as you were talking about, Trustee Matthew, just to have that visual that we know there are things in the future we've got to consider.
I think I want to pin to that is age zero to four, because a lot of times, we talk about campus levels pre-K up, but the zero to four has been used in the past as well by demographers, when Templeton prior to Zonda, and that was very helpful as well, because then you had a notion of, you know, what are your potential capacity for those young people that are going to be moving up, you know, into the district as well? So, that has been a part of, you need that, I think, as on some of those older presentations, but we can get that too.
So, has zero to four, have they been able to model that in the past?
I've not seen that come through on any of Zonda's information. We certainly can ask, but that's not typically been anything specific to us, or anything that's been presented in their fall or spring reports.
Yeah, especially when it relates to a specific area, correct?
Correct.
I have not seen a report such as that specifically to, you know, where are your birth to fours, specifically in an area, so.
And I just think it would be helpful, because how do you know your pre-K coming in? How do you know UK?
I would say that the, I would say staff could ask, but there may be, you know, again, you know, they can ask, but I don't, again, I have not seen that, so.
Okay. There's one, a couple other things I think I would like, might be two questions, and then one like ask, right? One, the ask would be, since Town Center is a recommendation, and then when we look at the, whenever we see the band map or whatever, just like a listing out or a discussion point about, okay, well, if Town Center was selected, why wasn't, were the other schools that were picked, and then why weren't they selected from a, and this is what kind of leads me to my, like, the question, right? Because I think is like, we've heard about the rubric, we heard about decision filter and all that, but my understanding of like looking through the decision filter documents and like the facilities evaluation tool is like, does a decision, and my question is, does this decision filter just like list out different categories and factors that are considered when implementing the decision versus explaining the metrics that made the decision? Like, which one do you all think that is? Let me rephrase, maybe I'll, so, does the decision filter just list out the different categories that were considered while you are making the decision versus explain like the metrics used to make the decision? You understand?
It's the first. So, it really is, remember, the rubric gives the data, the decision filter is when you're having the conversation about, because the rubric is going to show you opportunities to increase the strengths or the weaknesses in efficiency. The decision filter then is used to have the conversations, and those are the pieces that you talk through as you're making then the decision. So, it's the first thing that you explain. So, it's really talking through, as you're having the robust conversation, it helps to guide that conversation.
Okay. And then, the other thing I was going to ask about the rubric, because my understanding is just like a facilities evaluation tool, that 711 piece. So, we're going to look at some factors, and that feeds into discussion. That may not be the primary reason you guys selected it, or there could be another reason, like overarching strategic reason that was picked, but the rubric is like a piece of that conversation.
Correct. It's just one tool that can be used in the conversation.
Okay.
I really appreciated last year the way the slides were outlined, where it was like pros, cons, and then other factors. Those visuals would be very helpful comparing the schools, you know, as you looked at making these decisions, what were the pros, the cons, and the additional factors? That helped me have better context, you know, because this is a, this is a pretty big shift from how we approached the problem last year. This does seem not necessarily iterative, this feels like a complete pivot. And so, that's where I'm having some pretty big pain points, because this is just deciding on proximity, bam. So, I think definitely having some context for the other schools considered, that would
I think for me is the two points, the data that is coming from different, you know, sources, yes, there is an alignment, but also the context behind the data. I think the quantitative data that we're able to see, but then then some other insight that is coming along with the past experiences, or some things that we are not able to see in those numbers, that context behind the data, that will help me understand it better.
I'm just going to say, the top part of the rubric, unless you've got questions, in my mind, unless, as a board, I can say this to the board, unless we've got questions about why the three things were removed, which, Lee, I do think that part was different, but I do think it was demonstrating listening to the community and an iterative improvement. And I kind of, I've said this to community members, like, you kind of can't win it either way. If you do the process exactly, exact same as last year, then people are going to say, you didn't learn anything, you didn't do any better, you should have improved. And if you improve the process, or think you're improving the process, then people are saying you moved the goalposts. Like, I kind of feel like you kind of can't win. But on the top part of the rubric, I am struggling with what the difficulty is, if there is difficulty among the board, because I really do feel like the top part of the rubric, the CERC Subcommittee filled it out in the spring after we knew about the Pinkerton closure, before any of the five campuses had been named. If anything, it should be really objective on there. Nobody knew if their campuses were going to be named or not that was on that committee, and the data got updated. So, the top, I feel really great about, honestly, because I think we went through the process, we updated it, people were as objective as they possibly could be, because they didn't know what was going to be coming next. And I think removing the things that people said could be gamified was actually responsive to community feedback. The bottom part is the part that I've struggled with a little bit more. I believe and agree with the two things that were added, the transportation and security. I kind of can't believe as many people as we had helped put that rubric together, that nobody caught that last year, that it wasn't on there. So, I'm happy to see that on there. I know people think that, you know, some people are accusing staff of saying that transportation's not important, because now it's been zeroed out. I think it's an acknowledgement of there could be I think it's an acknowledgement of there could be a different or more, more robust process used to populate that. So I feel like, again, removing it, the data, but not the line item, was again responsive to community feedback. But while I agree both, with both of those being on there, me being able to explain to somebody how we got to those scores on the two that were added, in being responsive to the community, those five campus meetings, I feel like those came directly from those campus meetings. And I am not, I don't know if that process was as robust or thorough. It certainly didn't have two committees looking at it, which doesn't mean that it's worth nothing, and it doesn't mean it was, you know, the most thoughtful or thorough process that we've done of all of this. So, um, I just want to put that out there on the top part of the rubric. I'm kind of ready personally to put the top part to bed. I think it has a lot of fidelity and a lot of community responsiveness. The bottom part, I would be happy to discuss with anybody who wants to discuss. And the other thing I've kind of been noodling on a little bit, I've thrown out there for months, like, what's our philosophy? Like, our job as the board is the vision. So is our philosophy that we care about the perimeter? Is our philosophy to have as many kids able to walk as possible? Like, the, the buildings were built with one intent, as much as they could be, until we got to some of the southern campuses. Um, but the philosophy that is adopted, if there is one, and I'm not saying there has to be one, but if there is one, if you have a philosophy and then you look at the rubric, some things in the rubric fall away because your philosophy dominates the rubric. If you look at the rubric and then you say, this is my philosophy, now, now it looks like I'm trying to get the data to support, you know, my philosophy, there's two different ways to approach this, and we as a board have never had a conversation or finished a conversation, what's our philosophy? The vision is our job, and I think we have an opportunity to provide, provide clarity, or maybe efficiency is our philosophy, I don't know. Like, I could come up with five or six or seven different philosophies. Um, but I think that is one opportunity where we could provide clarity to the process that perhaps we haven't.
I think you're right, because, you know, last year, you know, and, and again, it, it's hard to compare last year to this year in a lot of ways, once, once Pinkerton is, is no longer on the map. But, but going into that, you know, the, I'll use the term protect the boundaries, was a component of what we talked about last year. I remember, um, Ms. Brown, when we were talking about the rubric and bringing it in, that was a piece that was on there and, and was talked about. Um, you know, I think that, for me, that kind of evolves from, you know, protect the boundary, and, and I think you also called it, you know, are we creating a, a desert, a school desert, right? Which I think is a better, better term to use versus protect the boundaries, because I think a school desert now is comprehensive within the entire district, the boundaries of the district. So, you know, I agree with you, I think some things have changed since last year, and by things changing 100%, because we went from 11 down to 10, and, and that changes the conversation. We had one school that was, you know, not a neighborhood walking school. Now, in, in the northern half of, of the district, now we have, every school is a neighborhood walking school, and, and so that becomes, you know, a much deeper, different conversation.
And, and I will, I will state that when you go from 10 to 9, the walkability will be even less. Uh, you're going to be expanding, you're going to be expanding zones, and as you expand zones, um, the, the walkability that you have, that you have become accustomed to is not going to be there. I know one of the things that Town Center, uh, prides themselves on is the walkability factor, but the Town Center zone will be expanded. And so that's something that you do have to keep in mind, um, that, again, just, just consolidating by one campus, uh, you're not going to be as walkable as you have across the district. If you move to eight, it would be that much more. And so, um, is, you know, is walkability the factor? Is that, you know, is that a part of the core principal conversation? And, and again, taking into account not what currently is, but what it will be once the consolidation takes place.
Well, that, I think that's a part that was maybe a little bit of a surprise for families last year. I think the conversation, and I think maybe to some degree this year, I don't know, but so much of the conversation last year was focused on closure and consolidation and where we're doing these things, and the reality is, short of doing nothing, almost everybody's boundaries changed a lot, like, a lot of boundaries changed last year, right? A lot of campuses changed. And the reality, in some campuses, we're not prepared for those changes because their school had not been the named campus to be closed. The reality is, this year, if we are in agreement that we are going to close a school, an elementary school, again, everyone's boundaries are going to change. Nobody's campus is going to look the same, whether their campus is closed or left open, generally speaking. And so I think that's the other part of this that we all are aware of, but we're, you know, we know more what the process looks like than people who've, you know, been through this one time.
I think my key question, the overlying question for, for all this, is how do we use our facilities to best achieve the mission? How do we deploy, deploy our facilities to best, um, achieve the mission of CAPL ISD? And so I, I don't know how that fits into the conversation. Which facilities are going to best support Cowboys United? Which facilities are going to best, um, attract and bring in, um, students? And so that is something that's always just kind of in my mind of, how do we use our existing facilities and choose between our facilities to, to bring, to attract and bring families?
I'm, I'm just a little unclear. Are we going to have our discussion now, or are we finishing the, the presentation? Because I've got a lot of thoughts, but I want to make sure that we're.
Yeah, I mean, do you want to just run through some, the, if there's any more slides or we want to run through them and then have the more continued discussion? I don't, I don't. Yeah, let's do that.
Okay, so, um, this, this slide.
Is reflective of, of, again, uh, Town Center closure, uh, but the possibility of two different plans for middle school. Um, the plan on the left would be reflective of north, uh, north would be Wilson, uh, would be Wilson, it would be Cottonwood and Denton Creek, uh, east would be Lakeside, Austin and Mockingbird, and then the, the districts on the south. Um, the plan on the right would be, would be aligning along Sandy Lake again. It would be Cottonwood, um, it would be Cottonwood, it would be Denton Creek, and it would be Lakeside, uh, and then the, going to east would be Wilson, it would be Austin, it would be Mockingbird, and then, um, Lee Canyon Ranch and Valley Ranch, uh, feeding to west. Um, and so you, you see the, the two different plans, and we won't spend a whole lot of time with that, uh, but you do see Plan 3A and Plan 3B. The next is the regeneration discussion. Um, when I presented this on the 22nd, uh, there were some questions about scope, um, only looking at, only looking at half, half a mile radius. So I went to, and then also it basing everything off of, uh, closing prices. Um, we went to, I went to the appraisal district, and I asked the appraisal district if they could provide, uh, broader numbers for us. Uh, and so they were able to pull this down by current, by, uh, current boundaries. Uh, so what you're looking at is you're looking at the total counts in each, you're looking at the average market value and the median market value. Um, one thing that, uh, that we have, that we have stated is that, is that we believe that, um, Austin and Mockingbird would repopulate faster than the others. And so when you look at the numbers, you do look at Cottonwood and Town Center, uh, Cottonwood, 1,056 homes, uh, Town Center, 1,069 homes. Uh, in Lakeside, you would have 1,719 homes, in Mockingbird, 1,941, and then in Austin, 2527, just the number of homes themselves. And then you could talk about the median values. Given the fact that you've got almost two and a half times the number of homes in Austin, I, I think the numbers would tell you that more of those homes would be coming on the market. Um, and then, uh, Lakeside, again, about another 1,700, and then Mockingbird, almost twice the number of homes. And so that's, um, uh, the numbers from the appraisal district that we wanted to look at, and then not only that, but your median values, uh, in Austin, 517,000. Uh, next would be Lakeside at 614, Mockingbird at 620, Town Center at 670, and then Cottonwood, 700,000. Um, so, uh, we, we have talked about ADA generation. Um, I believe that that's something that you need to consider, and just simply because, again, if you look at three to five years from now, which, uh, which of the areas will you be able to accurately predict will have, will have new families coming in? And the new families are the consideration. I know that there's been a lot of discussion about what, what about the apartments in the area? Apartments are, are not reflective of new families. Uh, you've got about 200 students currently in your apartments, uh, they're, they're, uh, between, uh, Lakeside and Town Center, you've got about 200 fam, about 200 students. That has been the historical number. Two, three years ago, it's been about that many, and then you can project three to five years from now, you'll have about that same number of students. I think what you have to look at is you have to look at where, uh, where will there, there be availability for new families to be able to move into, um, because that will continue to, that's going to continue to drive, um, what your, what your zoning numbers look like with, with, uh, for each, for each of the elementaries. Questions about this?
Well, maybe some clarification, that, and maybe this is just being in simpler terms, right, Mr. Williams, because I think you hit at it. Uh, apartments are consistent generally for us.
They are constant, yes, they are constant.
The, the mobility, you know, percentage, I think we tend to see is, is about constant uh, as well. But when we talk about, you know, the, the ADA generation, regeneration, whatever we want to call it, um, the, the housing or neighborhood turnover, what, what we typically see in that conversation is, you know, you've got homes that are, you know, two people, so you've got two out and four in, two out, six in. Um, and that's where that, that generation part actually comes from when we talk about enrollment and growth. Is that, is that a fair assessment?
Yes, sir, that's correct.
Looking at this for the first time, I'm comparing it to what we saw on the 22nd, and these numbers, at least for Town Center, are more than $100,000 lower than what we'd originally seen. Talk to me about the impact of that in terms of your analysis on regeneration?
So for Town Center specifically, this is the question, so that number was based off of, off of sales. Uh, this is actually based off of your market value, and, uh, market value is something that the, the appraisal district doesn't look at cell data. What they look at is, they are the people that are, that assess your property values. And so, um, what we asked for was, we asked for the market value of each, and so that's the reason those numbers are different. Um, and you are looking at median, and the median, uh, is, uh, sometimes the average may be skewed because you, you have the extremes, whereas the median is just the number of homes, uh, that are available, uh, kind of that midpoint there. Um, and so I think the challenge for me after the 22nd was to, was to widen the scope, so to speak. It was, uh, instead of it just being, uh, completely based off of, based off of cells in that half mile radius, uh, the appraisal district was able to, uh, put these numbers together for us, and so you've got much, uh, many more data points.
All right, to piggyback off of David's comment, uh, for apartments not being included in regeneration, is that because, like you were saying, they kind of stay constant? So every, you're assuming that that number will be that number every time? So it's not like in a regeneration number, it's just that's how many kids are coming from that apartment complex?
Yeah, not, not, not assuming, more looking at historical, if that makes sense.
Okay, just with the turnover rate, it's historically, it stays the same, same?
Now, one thing we do see is we do see some students that will, uh, some families that will move into the apartments and they will stay there until they can find a home to purchase. But when they move out, we get a new family in an area, and then we get a new, we get students coming back into the apartment to take their place.
The other thing I, I wanted to say, at least on this, and I guess to come in, uh, I feel like regeneration, ADA, uh, is a little speculative anyway, right? Like, so we're, we're looking at this as a factor, and it's obviously something that we need to consider, uh, but there's so many economic factors that are involved in that, that it, while it helps to, I don't want to overclock on it as well, right? Um, it would be, it was just my thought when I look, when I look at it.
But when you, you know, when you ask what were some things that we looked at, this was one of the things that we did look at in the decision-making process.
Well, and my thought about it being added, uh, Joby, was that the rubric was intended to be things that we should take stock of and keep our eye on and not forget about when we're making decisions. So I like it being added. The weight that we give it, we could debate all night, but it being on the rubric and something that we need to be attentive to is, is a, is a real thing, I think.
And, and.
And, and I want to say philosophically, one of the things that we looked at in Cowboys United from A through Z was how can we get more students back in the district? And that, that was, that was part of the reason that the discussion of regeneration had to be brought into play, you know, as, as you continue to look at, at, can we make, can we, can we make headway in being able to bring additional students back in? And, and where might those students relocate?
This is based on the current zones that we, that we designed.
Uh, it's based on the current zones, um, and then, uh, we asked, we asked the appraisal district for that, and they were able to provide it now. Um, this is not a, this is not a report that they normally provide. We, we, we had a specific request and they were able to provide it for us. So the, the third factor, and, and this one is also, uh, this was also had, um, a, a bit of discussion, and that's the facilities expansion question. Uh, the first thing we want to talk about when we talk about facilities expansion is the.
Area ratio.
First thing that we want to talk about is the floor area ratio, uh, for, for all five, and that was a part of the original, that was a part of the original rubric. Uh, it was, it was scored, uh, by the, by the committee, and it was, from what I understand, and, uh, and I think that it, what you do is you look at the, you look at the square footage of the plot itself compared to the square footage of the, of the, uh, area occupied by the current facility. Uh, those that, that worked on that, um, Kevin, I think you were a part of CERC, is that, did I kind of sort of sum that up? 711, yeah, yep. And so it, and it's actually a numeric rating. It's not a, it's not a, um, it's not a, a value judgment, it's actually just a numeric. And so the numeric rating for TCE, uh, of the five that we looked at was fourth. The one that was lower was Mockingbird, but as we looked at it, um, one of the things that we discussed was, should, uh, because it is programmed in for the district to look at, uh, at expanding, uh, the footprints. And so which of the footprints would more, uh, would better to, uh, would better accommodate the expansion? And so, uh, TCE got a lower rating there. Um, now, since Sid's been able to work with, and I, I don't know if our, the gentleman is still, still here, so he was able to, to look at what is the feasibility so that, you know, you can't, now, our architects, when the architects looked at it, they did not provide a plan because it really didn't fit, it didn't fit on the map, so to speak, but I know Sid's, uh, Sid's done some work there.
Sure, uh, yes, but, thank you. Uh, kind of go, going back to after the bond election in May 2023, we actually employed our civil engineer, Glenn Engineering, to look at all of the site, all of our sites, because part of the, the new, uh, part of the new bond program was putting in, replacing existing playgrounds with brand new, state-of-the-art playgrounds. So when he did this exercise, there were two footprints. So when he did this exercise, there were two footprint campuses that he was unable to show our, I'm using the word footprint a lot, but we have a footprint additions that we are, that we are doing at, that was part of the bond election at Lakeside Elementary, Valley Ranch Elementary, which is complete, and Austin Elementary was part of the bond program. So what he did was take that footprint addition and try to place it on each of those, those five campuses. He did, he was unable to do so on Denton Creek, given the footprint of that property, and he was unable to do so at Town Center Elementary because of the library property and the parking lot. Now, so what we did, we went ahead and installed the playground, and I must say, it was moved closer to the campus than the other campuses. We wanted to ensure that we didn't place the playground in an area where an addition would, would take place. So that was the plan. That was the whole point of this exercise with our, with our civil engineer. So at Town Center Elementary, with the belief that we would not be doing our footprint additions at that campus, we did place the playground closer to the building. So if we were to add on to Town Center Elementary using the footprint, we would have to revise the new playground. But given this challenge, we do have one of our very gifted community members that did come up with, with an idea, said, well, what if you did a land swap with the city? You take part of their parking lot for the building, and you give them some land for additional library parking on their, on their site. So the point, the, kind of the overall point of this was, if you're, if you're trying to rank the difficulty of the, of doing our footprint expansion, Town Center would probably be the most difficult. Now, is it possible? Anything is possible. As we know, Highland Park built an underground parking garage and built a, an elementary school on top of it. I can't imagine the cost of that. But, but, so, anything is possible. So we were looking at ranking based on, on difficulty. Any questions regarding, regarding expansion?
So, so Lee, kind of in review on the 22nd, and then we discussed it some on the 29th, there were three key considerations. One consideration was enrollment growth from the South, shifting, shifting boundaries, what we are referring to as counterclockwise. We anticipate, as, as we continue to grow in the South, the first campuses that will be, would be available for growth in the South to facilitate additional students would be Austin and Mockingbird. And so we did look at that. Also, the geography of kind of the layout of three above Beltline, I'm sorry, three above Sandy Lake, three between Sandy Lake and Beltline, and then three below, was another part of the geography discussion. And then Cottonwood and Lakeside being on the, on the boundaries, on the perimeters. So we looked at that, we discussed that, we discussed the concept of regeneration, and then we discussed the expansion. Now, that night on the 22nd, based on what we had, what we had received from our architect, from the engineer, it was deemed, Town Center was deemed not to be expandable until we, we came up with this alternate plan.
I thought that just came in. Have we ever talked about expanding Canyon Ranch? If the, if growth is a, is, has that been a part? Do we look at its ability to be expanded, since it has all that, that land and it's in the South?
Yeah, so Canyon Ranch currently is the largest. I think, if I'm correct, isn't that correct, that Canyon Ranch is the largest?
Yes, it's the, it's the largest square footage.
At 800. While that might be feasible, again, talking philosophically, I think it would be a philosophical shift to move an elementary beyond 800. Now, that's, again, you know, that, I guess, you know, anything is up for discussion, but I think that that probably would be something that, that the board would have to have some clear direction. Do you want to have an elementary with 1,000 students? So discuss, for slides-wise, that's it for tonight. I did want to reiterate those, those, those key positions and do, and provide some update. And so this was the slide for board discussion. You notice it said discussion, consideration, and possible action. We know where we are with that. I do think that it is important for, for staff, for Dr. Shivers and for staff, to have really clear direction from you all as to, as to how to proceed with this. And so I know that you've provided some things already, but we will, we'll take the balance of our time to discuss, so.
Can I ask one question, maybe, Dr. Shiver?
But we're trying to keep you up here until midnight. I mean, let's hear from you. You, we named you the lone finalist September 8th, and I know you have been practically in the district since that time and, and have had time to, you know, be involved, I think, in this process quite extensively. So, you know, I think in order for us to have good discussion tonight, more than anything, for me at least, I don't know about you guys, I'd just like to hear where you are in the process, your thoughts up to this point, and now that you're taking over, kind of this, this piece and running with it, where are you standing?
I think that was a question that was asked in every email I got, you know, over the last week and a half, two weeks. And, no, I think in responding and in reading all of the plans, the details, looking through different things, there's, there's one piece that has to be reiterated. And I think I said this specifically when I was responding to a couple of those emails, and that is, there cannot, we cannot negate how much work previous leaders have spent on this, staff members have spent on this to get to this point. This is not work that they've entered in four months ago. This is work that people have entered in, in 2017. Numerous leaders have been a part of it. We have had numerous individuals on the executive leadership team involved in it. Our cabinet has spent time with it. And so to think that years of work has not gone in to get us to this point would be naive. I do feel like when we look at this, we, we are taking a system that worked at one point in time to help give very good direction, involved our community highly. And we, we include those pieces in this of involving the community, taking CERC, looking at the direction that it's going. But it's clear from observation that we're missing something. It's clear from observation that in questions, whether they're questions from you, or if they're questions from the community, or if they're questions from our staff, that additional detail and an additional level of understanding as to how we're going to get to a decision is desired. And so I think in being a bridge that gets to come to you with recommendations between what we hear within our community, what our staff looks at, what is best for us as we go to the future, I think taking, taking a chance to get more details, to look with what we can produce for heat maps, so we understand, to take the ability to understand, what, what do five years look like in Capella, and what does 10 years? Sometimes 10 years gets a little, a little less accurate, but what does that look like? And then what does it look like to have a reasonable understanding of what we could truly expect for limited open enrollment? And in combining that and looking at things, then what does that mean for our budget? If we understand what that means, the bottom line for our budget with what we're looking at, it gives us a much better understanding of what we also need to come forward to with suggestions as to how to get to that $6 million or $6.5 million. I think that full picture is what gives us a better guiding principle as we move.
Floor is open.
And so, Mr. Williams, I want to come over to you, and then Dr. Shivers, please weigh in. Where does our strategic plan play a role in this conversation? I'm trying to align all of these pieces together, and generally, your North Star is a strategic plan, which provides guidance. And then align that with all the facts that we have, because I think we should, you know, facts are important, and we need to do that. And then where do we really want to go with this, right? I mean, because we talk about changing principles and values, which that confuses me. So I'm trying to find something that we can hang on to that will drive us from where we are today, you know, two, three, five years out. What should we be looking at in this to make this more palatable? Because I think we've got these changing perspectives and values, wants and needs, and that's confusing me in terms of what are we trying to make a decision on? I mean, things that I've had much better success at, like the RISB's Fund Board, we do that, and they tell us, here are five things that we are headed towards, we use that, and we go and go forth and have success in, in other things as well, in corporate as well. So I'm just trying to figure out, where should we be aligning these things? Because we can't have 100 different values that we're trying to chase. What are those North Star points that we need to be aligning ourselves with to get there?
So I think to bring value to your question right now, what we have is our strategic plan, and I think that's where we need to take this work and align it with, with what that, what that states. What does that really mean? When we look at Cowboys United and we see where our strategic plan is going, what does that mean? And how is it, how can we make that tangible? If we take that and we pull that down from, here are some tenants for Cowboys United, then specifically in a quantit, like, as much as we can quantify something within that, what does that actually look like for us? You heard Mr. Williams talk about knowing what some of the success criteria would be. I heard somebody ask earlier about what the student success criteria was going to look like for something, and so defining those and mapping that out.
So when you talk about, when you talk about the mission of a school district, it's education, right? It is about providing quality education for students. I think Lee said, where, where, what can we provide so that students can learn? While we all wish that we were not having these conversations about, about which of, you know, which campus to close, that's not reality. And so I think a lot of this discussion has to be tied back to what is the school district willing to forego to keep a, another campus open? That is, that has to be, that has to be a discussion. If the answer is, as you begin to make financial priorities, when you look at that, if the answer is, we must close a campus, that, to me, the North Star for schools is always, is always teaching and learning. It's what happens in the classrooms. And you have to have resources to make sure that you are providing the best possible solution for students. And it's not the building, it's the quality teacher in the building. It is aligned curriculum. It is that strong instructional leader that is the, that is your campus principal. We have to be able to keep those resources. And, and to do that, we are having to have these conversations.
I guess the real question, and Jonathan, I think you said you had a list of questions. I mean, what, what information do you guys need to move forward and make a decision on what has been recommended?
All right. So I'm glad we're taking more time. I think it's the right approach, and I need it because I'm not a yes on Town Center right now. And I'm positive, though, we need to close an elementary school for the '26, '27 school year. We can't keep running down our fund balance. It's already been depleted enough. But the question to me is, how do we get to the best of a bad set of options? And I'm not sold yet that this is the best of a bad set of options. So I've been thinking about this nonstop, talking to people about this nonstop for two weeks. I've got two ways that I could get to a yes on Town Center or any other school. Option one, this is my ideal scenario, would be to sort of mimic what we did with New Tech. And I know we're handing the reins over, but I thought the way you led the New Tech discussion was just phenomenal. A group of community members who presented with a set of options, and they weighed in on what they thought was the best approach for CISD. Ideally, we would do something like that here. Hearing that the community agrees with kind of the approach that we're taking, the criteria that we're considering, and choosing which school to close, would give me a lot of comfort. The fact that 75% of people in that committee said, move New Tech to the main high school campus, that gave me comfort, we're making the right call. If it's too late for that, it's my fault for not raising it earlier. I'm new to this, so I didn't realize I would need that now that I'm sitting up here having to vote on something that weighs pretty heavily. So the other option for me would be for the board to have that same discussion on the pros and cons of a set of options. I don't see myself getting to a yes with just, it's Town Center, yes or no, because I don't know what I'm choosing against. I don't know what the other choices were. So I will leave that out there, see if there's any appetite for doing that. And maybe it's just the pros and cons that Trustee Walker had, had mentioned earlier, because that's sort of what we saw with Pinkerton. As a Pinkerton parent in the audience, seeing you guys have that discussion last year, it's not fun, it's painful, but it gave me a lot of confidence that you all were really thinking through what the right choice was for the future of the district, even if that means it's Town Center at the end of the day, after we talk through it. I know it's not easy roping in another campus or another two campuses. That causes a lot of pain, but it does show that we've thought through it and talked through it all. And I don't see myself getting to a yes unless I've, I've seen something besides just one, one potential plan.
Meaning, you want to see what the choices were and why they chose them, and then the board have a discussion about it?
I mean, because one of the things that sort of come up tonight is like, a school desert or protecting our boundaries. I don't agree with those philosophically, and so if that's how we got to Town Center, maybe I'm never going to get to a yes on Town Center. But if it's other factors where, you know, at the end of the day, it came down to which schools were north of Sandy Lake and which ones weren't, maybe I can see the logic in that, but I don't think we've been very clear in that messaging. And I think hearing us talk through that gives a lot of clarity to the community.
Listen, I, I agree with you. When you were talking, I was, I feel like sometimes when we're up here, we're trying to choose the best-looking horse in the glue factory, right? I mean, it's, but I don't, and I have to, it is hard to articulate what it, what is needed. You did very well, by the way. I think for, for me, I do need to see some comparisons, honestly, to see. And, you know, I, when I think about our, our facilities and what, what we have at our disposal as Capella ISD, you know, I do think that no one else has a Town Center Elementary located, I can't think of another district that has a Town Center located where it is, right? Next to a police, next to a library, and tapped into the, the, you know, the trail system and all of that. So I want to see that as, I want to weigh that as well. That seems like something that should be weighed. And I know other campuses have other things that would be in those columns as well. So I think as you're talking, I, I think I need to see multiple options, right, of a comparison of what are we actually comparing against to be able to choose? And yes, one of those things is the 333. That's compelling, but that's just one, right? I don't think it should be the, the factor. It is a factor. It is a factor, but it feels like all of a sudden it's become the factor. And to your point, I'm not ready for a yes based on that factor. I, I need to see the pros, cons and others. Is that helpful?
Absolutely.
I would agree with that. Like, I think that's what the discussion was previously, right? Is like Town Center was recommended. What are the reasons for that recommendation? There are other, I asked for the, the CIRC piece of that. And then why weren't, what are the pros and cons of the other ones? And then we have the discussion about it. That I think is logical is kind of what we, what we were asked for. So, and then have, and have that, have that discussion at our future point.
I would chime in here that before, two or three weeks ago, Town Center was never mentioned. And so I think that, that pivot is going to take more time for, for me to get there.
It was mentioned July 29th, when five schools were named as potential candidates. At, at the time, there were two, if I remember correctly. You know, so I just wanted to spell that it was just two weeks ago, you know, that the potential was there. I try, I agree with you, Trustee Matthew. I think for me, you know, what we asked as a board was not to bring us a menu. That's what we asked for last year, and I think y'all can agree that.
Wasn't great.
No.
That's a good phrase. Yes, was not great. And, and so for me, what we asked for as a board was, you know, essentially bring us a recommendation. And, and that, that's what we got. So at this point in the game, I, I think it is wise. And, you know, we got a scathing email today. I think that said this decision was done in June or July and nothing else was looked at. And I know, Mr. Williams, in talking with you, as late as September 12th, there were still, you know, options and considerations and things being, being examined. So I think what I'm hearing is.
Yeah, without, without interrupting, tonight, we showed you Plan Three.
Yeah.
Which tells you there was a Plan One and a Plan Two.
But for me, like, why did this become?
Yes, there was.
Why did this become the recommendation?
There was.
I've got a copy of it. Anyway, the, the deal is, why was this the recommendation? And, you know, why was the other not considered or what, what eliminated it out? So I think that's the, the important thing.
Guess I have a question for you, Dr. Shivers. Do you need a philosophy that we are filtering things through from the board? Do you feel like your ELT team that you are, you know, adopting in a couple of hours is yours? But I know you've been working with, do you feel like you guys, you guys have a strong grasp on that? Do you guys need to talk about that and get back to me on answering that question? But I'm sitting here wondering, like, also, like, what does staff need from us for there to be clarity for us to move the conversation forward?
Absolutely. I think the first thing is the specifics, right? Like, the specifics of what you were talking about for details of things is very important. So we'll keep doing that. I think it also goes to Trustee Hill's point, though, of we use our strategic plan to help guide conversations that start in a few weeks with answering questions about our budget. But having and revisiting the clear direction that you'd like to go philosophically as a board, I think is very helpful. I think it's important and it unifies all of us so that we're working towards the clear goal or philosophy that you're, you're asking for.
So I appreciate that response because I've actually been thinking about what we did. I don't remember. It was in the winter at a board workshop ages ago when we really started to dig in, dig into this budget stuff. And we had basically a workshop for the board to decide, like, what are our budget priorities? And we've pointed back to those over and over and over again when we've been faced with two or three difficult decisions. And I think having some guiding principles like that would be helpful in the context of facilities or programs or district-wide approach to, to how we move forward. That's what I need.
Jonathan, would you explain a little bit more? When you said something like New Tech, what, what are, what are you thinking?
Some sort of community group, ideally in my mind, that had already been formed so that it can't be gamed by people who have a very vested interest in the outcome, who weigh in and tell us, do they agree this is the best of the set of options on the way forward? I thought the way you framed that question with the New Tech group, Mr. Williams, on what's the best choice for Capella Independent School District as a whole for that New Tech decision was exactly on point. No school is ever going to feel like their school closing is the right answer, but there can be a right answer for the district as a whole.
Trustee Powers, I think that's really the, the essence of this conversation, though. What's in the best interest of the school district as a whole, right? And how do the decisions that we're, we're weighing in figures into that? But I think what's missing is what is the methodology we're missing here to get there? Because, you know, Mr. Williams did a, did what he did with New Tech and weighed that out. I think some of those parameters look different. They're not identical. They look a little different trying to do this for, say, an elementary. But I think we just have to get to the facts, because I think the biggest thing that we've had the discussion on, the emails on is the facts, right? What are the facts? What can we grown as the substantive facts that are indisputable across the board that we can leverage and use as a baseline? Because everything else is going to be subjective. And I think that's one of the challenges that I think Trustee Cavanaugh hit the nail on the head. I mean, after the decision was made last year, it still came back and like, oops, we, we didn't get that right, right? And so you had to make another adjustment, which some people would think like, hey, you changed the plan, right? So I think one of the things we had to be really, really intentional about, and I pick up your word, Mr. Williams, intentional about in this is understanding what is the framework that we're going to be using consistently? Because not only for this, but going forward in the future. So we will make a decision on this at some point for 26, 27. Is that the framework that we will utilize going forward that can be applied, you know, without a lot of angst and a lot of change and modification to it? Because I think we've got to come up with a system we all agree on collectively, not only here for us, but community as well as for staff. Because right now, we keep changing what we're saying as the primary reason for making the decision. And that creates a lot of angst. That's my personal opinion on that one.
I agree with you, Trustee Hill. But I, one of the things I think is important to think about there is like, sometimes you have like the strategic plan that we'll point to to say like, hey, that's our baseline of what we're trying to, where we're trying to go. But it seems like these conversations have different aspects to them naturally, right? Like Pinkerton and New Tech, last year, they had an aspect to it. Then a lot of things changed in between there. One of the things, we, we put up a VADER, that didn't go very well. Then we had a, what is it? We had another demographer report that cast us even further in, in the hole that we had before. And then on top of that, we were holding out hope, I think, for some funding from the school district.
Were we?
I mean, I mean, I mean, there were people who were, you were grasping at it. You thought that, okay, there would be some sort of give and take. They held up $4 billion for vouchers. They got vouchers passed. And what did we get? We got less than 1%. Like, those are major factors that shed through, that they came after. And then we're, we're in a little bit of a different position than we were last year when we were, we were making these decisions. And I think, so a part of that has to be considered. But then I think when we hear next week, I think is what that will, or not, not next week, I don't know when we're going to hear this. I just said next week.
You, you had a lot of requests.
Yeah. Sorry, not next week. Don't, don't strike, strike that from the record. But, you know, whenever, whenever we, we get to that, I think that's, that's what we're going to need to hear is like, okay, those factors, this is why, like, we arrived at this decision. And I think that reasonableness test also for, from our, our aspect of looking at where our job is to look at the best interest of the school district and say, and, and, and apply that filter. And I, you know, to your point, what is that philosophy? Like, we did have board budget priorities. And I, do we return to those and restate those and say like, that's the one? Because I remember when we even started the work here about setting up the CIRC committee and all, they were provided those board budget priorities. It's like, this is what the board is, is going to value. You know, continue to pay teachers and keep our programs and, and, and all that. So I think we have our, our guiding principles that are out there. I think we need to see now through this work, what were the factors and how were they applied in this particular situation? And then evaluate from there.
I'm going to piggyback, Trustee Bentley, because we talked about the team of eight. And I think the application, so I, I totally follow you, Trustee Bentley. But I think the application, the consistency of the application is, is where we come. I think that's what I'm hearing from Trustee Bentley, and correct me if I'm wrong in, in my interpretation, but I think that consistent application, because I know Trustee Cavanaugh, over the years, we've had the same, these multiple conversations and trying to get consistency in terms of the application. Because if you vary too much, you can't get consistency. And I think that's where I think we're trying to get to. And correct me if I'm wrong, if I'm misinterpreting where you're coming from, but that's where we've talked about multiple things over the years, but the consistency and application is where I think we need to get, get to and to get to that steady state.
So what happens next?
What are next stages?
I would ask Dr. Shivers, we've just given you a long list, like, how much time do you guys need to do the work? Because we've, we've now just asked for a lot of work. So I think, I feel like it's maybe pretty much, like, I don't know if we should be telling you guys or can, do we have time to come back before the 27th? Is the 27th the next natural time? Do you need to confer with your team first?
No, I think there's two pieces that, one, yes, there's a lot of work. And I want to make sure I understand exactly every piece of what, what you've asked for. We begin looking at our budgets in that November timeframe. So there is urgency to getting a direction and there's urgency to understanding what our final decision is going to be. So I joked a little bit about next week. I don't think next week is possible by any means. I do think it would be good to take a look at the information you've requested, have some discussion, bring information to a workshop to discuss. And I think finding something before the next board meeting would be beneficial. I don't know that it can be next week, though.
Can we set like a tentative date among?
That's what I'm asking. That's what I was going to say.
The 20th, two weeks?
The 20th?
Can we set a tentative date?
I mean, we're looking at you guys for what, what, how much time you need.
We don't have anything.
Here, oh, that's so loud on this one, I'm sorry. Hearing kind of the different feedback and things on this, just for my mind processing this, I heard once again, kind of the discussion about bringing a group together. So not bringing a group together to go through similar, I know, Trustee Powers, that's something that you had mentioned a second. I just, like, looking at a timeline of things like that, the expectation. And I'm also hearing the pros and the cons and going through that piece to look and see kind of the reasoning and having that discussion within there. I just wanted to see where we're landing on my end when I was thinking timeline within that, where y'all were on that discussion.
And I'm going to say right now, I'm not available until October 27th. It's the first time.
While that sits, it sounds like I may be alone and wanting the community feedback, but you guys tell me if, if I'm wrong about that.
You're, you're correct on that, on that aspect. I, I think that it's our, it's our job to do that, to evaluate those factors and have that discussion, at least at, at this stage, for what's presented to us.
It's my option too, so I'm happy to do it.
Then do we wait until the 27th? Are you able to remote in? Are you out of town? What's, what's your schedule like?
I'm on a flight on October 20th at the exact time. And I know now with our new parameters with the legislature that we can only meet outside of business hours, that changes, it's only those evenings. And so the 20th, I am, I am not available.
So on a flight here or going, would, would you be later? I can't even say anything. Would you be later that week available? Or no?
No.
Okay.
I fly out the next day. I, I thought we would be wrapped. Sorry. So yeah, I return home on the October 23rd and then I'm home. And I'm not going anywhere for a really long time, but until then.
Good afternoon meeting, but.
I don't think.
On the 27th.
Yeah, if we meet on the 27th, it looks like that's our next time. So y'all got two full weeks minus one day.
27th it is.
The other discussion we need to talk about?
Well, I'd like to add, ask, can you also add in there the consequences of not closing a school?
Meaning from a budgetary standpoint, what the other?
Yes.
Trustee Walker, you had asked for a comparison. I'm going to assume you mean the five schools that were, or just clarify that one for me.
Walk us through the decision-making.
Sure.
Right? And, and I think if you were to look in back at September of 2024, that, for me personally, that was a helpful visual and, and walking through that.
Other ask at this point? All right, well, that will clear our agenda for tonight. I will make a motion, we adjourn. Open motion and second to adjourn. Any discussion here and then we'll adjourn, or we'll take a vote, all in favor. Motion passes 7-0, we're adjourned at 9:45.